We're back.
Long time no see.
What was that, all of 10 minutes?
I'm going to bring Christine to the table.
Okay, great.
Is that better language?
Yes.
That's better, yes.
Just because we've been working on the...
First bill manual.
Yeah. Somebody...
You know, Anne Marie, the only problem with that background is it makes you look very, very pale.
I thought that was my skin that made me look very...
I don't think you're that pale.
Time for your bronzing gel.
Well, the other thing is, so I've got two, I've got my laptop here and then I've got a computer behind it and it's a blue screen. That's probably...
Yeah, your glasses reflect the blue screen.
Yeah.
That's probably it.
So, wondering if Glenn's having a... Okay, Glenn's not seeing his link.
Okay. By the way, your one hour update did work.
Oh, it did, okay. So I wonder if we accidentally didn't include him as a... No, he's... Oh, it's the wrong email address. So I'm just gonna send...
We need Rob yet, too. There's the chief. Welcome back, chief.
Yep, thank you, sorry.
No problem.
Let me get some more time.
Ellen Lorraine, when we get to the revenue and expenditures, I'm having a little trouble following the numbers, so I'm looking forward to you walking us through it. I mean, I see the top line numbers on revenue and on expenditures, but then I get confused at the excess revenue number. So if you could, if you could, I'd like to ask Ted that we take that, that out of the...
I was planning to anyway.
Yeah, out of the consent agenda and kind of walk through it a little bit.
Great, I see Glenn and Rob are both in the attendees.
Oh, great.
Got it.
I see Rob is for sure, yeah. Yeah, both of them are, great, good catch, Andrew.
I was watching for Glenn, but I missed him. All right.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, hey. All right, looks like we're all here now. And so we have 35 participants. That's great. So it is October the 12th at 6:32, and we are here for the monthly meeting of the mayor and city council. So we call a meeting to order. I have a few announcements I'd like to share before we get started. But before I do that, I'd like to remind anyone who's an attendee, if you could help us make sure we know who's in attendance by not only giving us your first name, but also your last name, so we can keep track of who's here. Also, we've got one person who's identified themselves as iPad. If they could identify themselves, that would be very helpful. So first of all, good news for everyone, parking meters season will end at 8:00 PM on October 14th. So on Wednesday night, our parking meters will go off and parking meters will be free. That does not eliminate the three-hour parking limit that we have downtown, but it does mean the meters will no longer require feeding. And also remind everyone that BB Hospital is doing a great job of offering a great number of flu shot venues, clinics around the community this month. And if you haven't already gotten your flu shot, please take time to do it. It's one of the things you can do to help yourself, should you have the flu or should you become exposed to the COVID pandemic. So please help yourself by getting a flu shot. And BB's personnel were at City Hall today doing it, very easy thing to do, and I would encourage you to take advantage of it. Also, there will be a hazardous waste takeback and a drug takeback on October the 24th. It'll be held over on Schley Avenue at the Streets Building. And I would encourage anyone who has either hazardous waste or drugs that they would like to dispose of to take advantage of that, keeping in mind that paint will not be accepted. Also, we continue to offer community-wide leaf pickup on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. You need to schedule that in advance by calling City Hall 645-7777 and using extension 101 to schedule that. I have the, I also wanted to advise everyone that, as we said last month, we, the city will not be endorsing trick-or-treat. We've canceled it this year. And so on the, in the interest of making sure that everyone stays safe. And so we, there will not be an official Halloween trick-or-treat night for us this year. And also St. Peters has informed us that they will not be hosting their trunk-or-treat. And then I think we're all aware that the election is looming large on November 3rd. I would encourage you to take advantage of the absentee ballots if you haven't already done so. But if you are going to vote in person, make sure you check where you're, where you're voting, where you should go to vote. Because if you previously voted, as many people do in Lewis, at the Lewis School, you have a new polling place. And then I believe will most likely be Shields Elementary. But make sure you check that information that's been sent out by the Board of Elections before you go out, if you're going to vote on the day of election. I would also have the unfortunate pleasure of announcing that we will, we have canceled Hospitality Night, which is usually the first Thursday night in December, in the interest of safety for everyone in the community. We did not feel, and the merchants did not feel, that they could host Hospitality Night in a safe format, knowing also that we would not have any, any live music available, because the high school bands are not performing at this point. So we have canceled Hospitality Night. And earlier this evening, in consultation with members of council and the chamber, we have decided to also cancel the Lewis Christmas Parade this year. Both of these we greatly regret having to do, but given our, the age of our population and consideration of safety for everyone, we feel it is the most prudent thing we can do. I do want to announce that there is a group of people that are working together to organize a program called Lewis Lights, which will encourage people to light their home and provide a driving map where the people can drive around and see them. A lot more details of that will be coming out in the next few days or weeks. But this is an opportunity to encourage people to not only get out and enjoy the lights safely from the car as they drive around the city and enjoy them, but also to come into the merchants and cast their ballots for the one they like best. We had also one other incident that happened this weekend that I want to remind everyone that was disappointing. We have a great relationship with Lewis and Bloom, and we have a terrific effort by them to beautify our city. And we are known as the most beautiful small city in America, in the world, I believe, based upon that indication that we got a few years ago. On Friday night, there was vandalism of the pumpkin displays in downtown area. Approximately 20 pumpkins were smashed on the roadways around downtown. Our Streets Department did a fabulous job of cleaning them up. And I think anyone who came out after probably 7:30 would not have seen it. But it was, it did happen. And Lewis and Bloom is disappointed that it happened. I'm disappointed that it happened, and I've asked the chief to make sure that he does everything, or the officers on the force do everything they can to monitor this kind of behavior, so we will not see a recurrence of it. And finally, on this agenda, I would like to delete item D3, which is the possible appointments of the Parks and Rec Commission. We are still working on that and we'll be back with that next month. That's all the announcements I have. Does anyone at the table have an announcement that they would like to share? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on then to the presentation of the Elaine Bisbee Award. This is an annual award that we give every year, is normally given in the spring. And this is an employee recognition award, that is, employees nominate a fellow employee to receive this award. And we did, we went through that process back in January and February, and we should have made this award in April. But here it is, October, for a variety of reasons, mostly related to COVID. We did not get around to awarding that award until today. And this afternoon, Ellen Lorraine, McCabe, and Anne Marie and I traveled to our Streets Department and presented this award to Corey Castanegro, a Streets, a City Streets employee. And he was absolutely surprised. Corey is a very young member of our staff, and he was nominated by Pat Liberto, who was a 2017 award winner of the Elaine Bisbee Award. Corey, if you don't know him, is a very kind, gentle-hearted guy who really does his best to serve everyone he comes in contact with. And so congratulations to Corey, and thank you for a job well done. He, I know the men of the Streets Department were all there, thank you Bonnie for applauding. But he was very surprised. His parents were able to join us and couldn't figure out, when they, they did a good job of keeping him away from the Streets Building while they staged this thing. And he couldn't figure out what his mother was doing there when he arrived. He was expecting maybe something awful was going to happen. It worked out very well, so he was very much surprised. So moving on then to item D2 is presentation of possible action appointments to the Police Review Ad Hoc Committee. This committee was, is an ad hoc committee that was formed last year, last September. We received a report for them earlier this fall. And we, when we reorganized, we agreed to go forward with this committee for some additional work on that report and implementation of some of the recommendations that were put out in that report. Bonnie and Rob are co-chairs of that committee. And I was asking Nancy Powell, who was a member of the original committee, and Carolyn Jones, who was also a member of the original committee, to continue to serve on that, on that committee. And I've also invited Larry Sharp, former member of the Delaware River and Bay Authority, and also a former, sort of, he formerly served on our Parks and Rec Commission to join that committee as well. I would ask for a, an acceptance of those committee appointees.
Mayor, isn't there another member you haven't mentioned?
Uh, quiet. Have I overlooked someone? I'm sorry.
I think you may have.
Okay. Remind me.
Is that Trina Brown Hicks?
Oh, yes, sorry, you're absolutely right, Rob, thank you, I did, yes. We also did invite Trina Brown Hicks to join us. Trina, thank you, Rob, it was my error, I just didn't write her name down here. And Trina will be, is a member of our African-American Commission. And so we will, we'll ask for those four members to be appointed to the, to that commission. Thanks, Rob.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rob, sorry.
After you.
Well, all I was gonna say is, first of all, thanks to everyone who, who we deserve. It's, it's a little odd, because we're gonna have, it's a little odd, because we're gonna have an even number of members. But I think, given the, the work of the committee to, you know, as Ted said, to, to get the report in shipshape and work on the implementation, I don't think that'll be a, a problem. But in case anybody was counting and saying, wait a minute, this, this, that's even number, we are aware of that. It's not, it's, it's not a, it's intentional.
Right, thank you.
Sorry, Rob.
No, I was just, I was just gonna move to approve the nominations.
A second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We deleted item D3. The next items on the agenda are the extra mile day. And I would just, we don't read these proclamations anymore, but I just wanted to comment on that. The extra mile day is recognizing people who go, give the extra mile to the, in serving the community in which they live. And normally, we do not name an individual or an organization for this award. However, this year, I chose to nominate and put forth and rec, give this recognition to BB Medical Center for their ongoing effort to serve us well in a compassionate and competent way as we've dealt with this pandemic. So I think it's a very well-deserved recognition for them. I have spoken with Dr. Tam, he's very excited about this award and, or this recognition. And again, we're very fortunate to have BB and Dr. Tam here serving our population. The other, the other awards here are recognitions, proclamations here relate to cybersecurity, freedom from, from workplace bullying, community planning. And that one, I would just recognize that we are one of the very few small communities in Sussex County, if not the only few community in Sussex County that has a planner. Janelle's with us tonight, Janelle, we're very happy that you're here. We talked about having a planner for many years before we finally hired Tom West to join us. And when Tom was ready to move on, we were fortunate enough to have Janelle join us. So thank you for your service. I think the community, all benefits from community planning efforts and your efforts as well. Thank you very much. And then proclamation recognizing Jackie Sutherland Finder for her efforts in working with, in recognizing the importance of the elder population. And Jackie, as you may know, was the founder of the Greater Lewis Community Village, now known as the Community Village. Seven years ago, they began serving the people here in, elderly people here in Lewis, and now have expanded their service not only to Lewis, but well beyond and down into South, South Sussex County, including the Bethany region. So congratulations to her on her 90th birthday. Board member, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, can I just say something very quickly? I was, I was on the founding board, but there's no question that Jackie, Jackie, that, that Jackie, she was just, she was and is the heart and soul of village volunteers. And she pulled together a group and created, created the Greater Lewis, what was then called the Greater Lewis Community Village out of nothing. And it now is providing tremendous support to area seniors and hats off to Jackie. That's all it is.
Great, thank you. There was a recognition for her on Friday, so that proclamation was presented to her at that time. If there's no other comments on any of those, I would move on then to the consent agenda. I would like to pull out the financial activity report from this agenda, if anyone else has any other items they would like pulled out. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve item E1, Mayor and City Council Meeting Minutes, or to, A2, Board of Public Works Meeting Minutes, the Police Department Activity Report and the Fire Department Activity Report.
Fair, I would move to, to accept those items with the proviso that clerical corrections to the Mayor and City Council Minutes have been submitted to the, to the Assistant Secretary for incorporation.
Great, thank you, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrew. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving then to item E3, the Financial Activity Reports. Ellen Lorraine, you want to talk to us about that, or Bonnie, or Andrew?
Ellen Lorraine could walk us through the update, at least the one pager.
Okay, so everyone should have received, was also attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting, the monthly financial report for ending September 30th, 2020. The report, which is approximately 22 pages long, does compare month and year-to-date 2020 to fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2021 for September, and then the year-to-date figures. If you look on page one of the longer report, it does show that being six months into the fiscal year, we should be approximately 50% of budget. And I am pleased to report that we are showing a surplus in the general fund for the month of September, which the surplus is $64,313. Revenues in this month of September are higher as compared to the year previous by about $260,000, and I will be explaining that in just a few moments. Expenditures for September are higher as well by approximately $27,000. So yes, we are in a good position. But let's move on to the summary sheet, because this is where I provide some additional analysis when we look at April to September of 2019 and compare it to April to September of 2020. At the top of the one-page summary, I put the total revenue from the, the longer report, but I do not include grant revenue in those figures. And so for 2019, you'll see total revenue at 4.3 million. And for 2020, it's 4.45 million, because it's just taking the top-line operating revenue. A lot of our revenue increase came from the tax levy. We do not budget for quarterly supplementals, and that's showing an increase in our tax by about $54,000. They see a lot of reductions in revenue from the prior year, and some of these, we've been noting each month that they are down from where we were this time last year. For example, City Dock in Marina is down, grocery seat rental tax is down, building permits are down, but we are coming back. We did have a very good September. Fines are down, and most notably, our parking meter collections are down, $96,000. We are seeing, if you flip on down to page, where it says page eight, it's account 10496. It's the BPW in Lower Franchise. You will see a significant increase in that, 186,483. And that is due to timing of receipts that we have received from the BPW. This is the 5% collection that we get from their adjusted revenues. And it was noted that currently, we are showing February, March, and August revenue in this figure. So that's distorting those figures slightly.
Ellen Lorraine, maybe this is where I got thrown off. Should that, should that be in black instead of in red?
It should be, yes. You are correct.
That, that's where I got confused.
Sorry, sorry for the confusion.
No, that's, no, I'm, I'm much happier, it's in black.
Yeah.
Though overall, revenues did increase in September by about $85,000, $86,000. It also helped that expenditures were less. So about midway in the page, we're showing general fund expenditures for 19 at 3.1 million, and for 20, they were 2.9 million. So we were coming in $125,000 less on our expenses. And in the column on the... And in the column on the right, that explains why those departmental expenditures expenditures are coming in less. Personnel costs and overall operating and supplies are coming in less. I'll draw your attention to the last line. It's account 10590, operating. That is showing an increase of 34,000. But please keep in mind that $27,000 of that increase is COVID-related and storm-related expenditures. So we are seeking actively seeking reimbursement for those expenses as well as other expenses related to COVID, and we're hoping to to get reimbursed for a lot of those expenses. The bottom line is, is we've been able to add to our excess revenue 211,000.
Question, Eleanor Rain. I I'm not quick enough to do this kind of thing in my head, but we have we're benefiting in this reporting period from the timing differences in the receipt of BPW fees and lower franchise fees.
Yes.
And there are other timing differences. Is there any? Do you have any sense projecting to the end of the fiscal year, whether we're likely to come in ahead or behind last year?
I think we'll be coming in pretty stable. We do have a few more days for the meter collection, but that is a big item that has significantly less this year. If we are able to recover some of those COVID expenditures, which I'm optimistic are, then I think we could be stable.
Thank you.
There was a big article in yesterday's news journal about the significant loss that many beach communities have experienced with parking revenue this year. It looked as though Rehoboth was more severely impacted than Lewis was based upon the reporting that was in the paper. But still, it was a significant hit. We not only delayed the start of our meters, but we also cut off three hours of operation, which had an impact as well, plus the reduction in tourists. So.
I believe September parking revenue was higher is past September was higher than 2019 parking revenue.
That's good.
And that's largely held up by the beach, the beach parking lots. They, um, I I think that Cape Henlopen reducing to 60% capacity probably put a lot more people in our beach parking lots. So that that definitely benefited and helped to offset some of what we lost in the downtown.
And then we increased the the hours downtown by two hours, too.
That was that was last that was done in for 19 as well.
Okay, I forgot.
Yeah.
Another thing, I think what I'm hearing anyway, that that may help us is when grocery receipts rental taxes are ultimately paid in a couple of months, I'm hearing that the rentals are particularly in September and October are running very high. So so that that may come in ahead of budget.
Exactly.
The other thing we're doing that could end up benefiting that area as well is we've engaged host compliance. We've talked to you about them before, and and they have software that they've developed to go and search for the the online platforms that people use, like VRBO, Airbnb. I mean, there's over did they say over 50 or over 100? A ton of platforms out there now that are doing online rentals. So we're obviously the purpose of doing that is we're hoping to to recover some some more unlicensed rentals through that.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the financial statements? Hearing none, I think we can accept that by common consensus. So we're ready to move on. Anne Marie, to your report.
I guess I need to unmute. Um, yeah, so I just, as it relates to construction, the work on the Savannah Road Bridge continued through September, and I'm just gonna leave it there because at this point, I don't think we have any sense of when it's gonna be done. So hopefully, hopefully soon. Do you have a mayor? Do you have a better answer than that?
I did participate in a meeting with them last week on the bridge.
Okay.
And they are scheduled for their walkthrough inspection on the 28th.
Okay.
So that should from that should come any punch list items.
Okay. But it's been two more weeks, two more weeks since August. So, you know, we'll see. Um, you'll recall that last month, you accepted the low bid from JJID for Phase 24 Street Program. So we had our preconstruction meeting with them. And at this point, we are waiting on the the Dell dot permit, which we hope to have very soon. And we will start construction a week after receiving the Dell dot permit. The pile of town road water main replacement that BPW is doing, that is now pushed to the beginning of November.
COVID, do you have any idea what what kind of if any street closures or?
It would not be street closures. It'll be lane closures.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty sure. So we we continue to have our biweekly calls with the governor. And we have our our weekly Zoom meetings with the the chamber and the downtown businesses or not citywide businesses, actually. The Board of Health is now meeting every three weeks, you know. So I think we we're kind of stabilized in terms of, you know, how how we're responding to things. You know, I I think what we do know is that at any at any moment, you know, if if somebody in the workforce tests positive, we could have to, you know, kind of step back a few a few steps. So we do monitor that closely. I think you all saw an email from me last week reminding people how important it is to to wear their masks and and practice all the proper protocols. Um, the the net house gets quite a bit of use actually at this point. So that's good. We had a lot of building permits issued. And when I report on building permits, I pretty much consider anything on a residential property that's not a new structure or residential renovation. So it could be an HVAC, it could be a roof, it could be windows, it could be an addition. We had 55 of those permits on residential properties last month, which is that that's high. Normally, we're in the 30s. Um, we, let's see, the trying to think, you know, so many meetings that have just kind of continued. We spent a lot of time working on the Personnel Manual and started the meetings with staff, so we'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, we are getting ready to initiate. We were under contract in the the work on our cybersecurity review will begin soon. We had a number of our staff that participated in the Virtual International City County Management Association Conference. So that was a really, I thought it was a really good virtual conference, and and all of the sessions are available to us until December 31. So there are a number of sessions that I'm going to go back and watch. And I know Sue Ann's been kind of running them in the background. So I think we have a few more months that we can take part in that. Both Allison Kirk and Rick Melendez are participating in the Supervisory Academy that was organized by the City of Milford, but it's being offered statewide for municipal staff looking in to going into supervisory tracks. Janine has been participating in the Municipal Clerk's Institute. So we've been trying to make sure that we stay. I guess, well-trained. So that's all I've got.
Right. Any questions for Anne Marie? Obviously, it's a busy time at City Hall, and I think Anne Marie and I look at each other some mornings and wonder how many more Zoom meetings can we do?
Right.
Anyway. So thank you very much, Anne Marie. Then moving on, I think we're ready to move on then to item G one, unfinished business presentation of possible action on an ordinance to amend Chapter 197 zoning section 197 dash four wetlands to establish a wetland buffer requirement. We have the resolution and and in front of us, and we held a public hearing last week. We kept the record open until noon today. And the ordinance is here for us for our discussion. And Janelle, would you like to talk about this briefly?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Just so for everybody's reference, we did receive eight letters regarding the proposed ordinance. They were attached to the agenda. They are also on the city's webpage under the Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee. So those all came in. Typically, they wanted to see larger buffers based on what the counties are doing. And somebody, one of the I members of the public wanted to make sure that they referenced a number of reports that had that had been used and the city has access to for other things. Again, it's just an ordinance looking to actually create a buffer around wetlands that the city currently does not have. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Glenn, do you have anything you need to add or would like to add to this at this point?
I don't. Other than I guess I the the agenda references the ordinance, but I'll read it just so everybody knows the exactly what ordinance it is. It's a version dated August 31, 2020. This is an ordinance to amend Articles nine of Chapter 197 zoning municipal municipal code of the City of Lewis, Delaware, Sections 197-74, relating to wetlands and the creation of a wetland buffer. Thanks, Mary.
All right. So we have this ordinance. We all participated in the public hearing the other day. I think, as Janelle aptly discussed, we heard quite a bit of conversation about interest or quite a bit of interest about the possibility of this buffer maybe not large enough. I think this has been before us before. We sent it back to the Planning Commission for review. It's back with with an A and B zone here. And I would open it up for discussion at the table. Rob, would you like to start?
Sure, I'd be glad to. You know, I sent you a few questions, and thank you for your responses. I'm not sure I follow them all, so I might raise some of them. Looking at the ordinance, item D one, because the one that's on the website doesn't have line numbers, at least not that I see. Item D one. You've inserted all and deleted both state and federal wetlands. This is a typo. I think you want to restore the word wetlands.
Yes.
Okay. Then in table of permitted activities. I didn't follow everything. For instance, it says other road crossings, such as bridges with permits, are permitted in zones A and B. And I asked, does this mean a developer can put a paved road and bridge across a wetland and still count it as buffer? And your answer didn't. I didn't really hear an answer to that question. Yes, they can throw a road across the wetland. Can they still count the road as buffer?
The road would not count as the buffer. The land underneath would, because if you think about a road going over, it's going to have to be built over the wetlands. Think of it.
Be raised up?
Correct. It would have to be elevated.
So it'd be on piers?
Yes.
Okay. That's that's great.
It has been done. It's rare, but it can be done.
Okay. Are those piers put in the inside the wet one?
Yes, but you get a permit from the Army Corps, and sometimes they don't actually count that as disturbance of the wetlands. It depends on how it's done and what process it goes through.
Okay.
And that's a determination by the Army Corps and Denrec.
And if it's title, you still you need a permit from Denrec and the Corps.
Yes.
Then I I asked about invasive species control being required, and you said the HOA would enforce that. And the buffer management plan would identify the invasive species they want to attack. That leads me into the enforcement mechanism by the HOA and who who makes sure the HOA carries out its responsibilities. But maybe that should come later. Then there's a term that says flood floodplain creation without impacting associated wetlands with permits. I don't know what that means. As a permitted activity, what does that mean?
It means you could you could grade the property in the area to create new floodplain area. It's not common, but it is something that could be done. It could actually end up benefiting. It would end up being in a buffer area that could actually end up benefiting the wetlands itself because you're lowering the grade. So you could actually get some of that growth and give the wetlands a little bit more room to grow.
So the you you're working in the buffers now in both zones. And you're creating a floodplain, which means what? You're depressing the elevation?
It could be, yes. Typically, it would be. Again, it depends on what's being done in the area that that's coming from floodplain management managers who think that it could be a beneficial use. Again, it's rare to be done, but it's something that there's a potential for.
Okay. Then you said selective cutting for maintenance is not permitted in Zone A and permitted in Zone B. Selective cutting, if it's of an invasive species, wouldn't you want to permit that?
Well, again, the selective cutting should be for trees. The intent is there was a lot of discussion that the selective cutting was for trees. We wanted to make sure the trees are maintained and that you would be able to clear trees that were damaged or that were sick to help maintain those trees. So we can clean that out by adding the word trees, but the selective cutting, it really references the maintenance and the keeping of trees.
Could we maybe add selective cutting of trees and invasive species?
Well, I think we do that of trees because invasive species is already being addressed under invasive invasive species control.
Okay. Um, I think that might the adding of trees might help then. Then in I had it by line, there's a a statement that no buffers are required for wetlands to be filled with a valid Corps of Engineers or Denrec permit. My question is, why not? I mean, why don't? Why do we just defer to the Corps and Denrec permits? Why don't we say, no, you can't fill wetlands?
Because they actually have jurisdiction over certain things. Typically, it's of a smaller size that they allow for the filling of wetlands. So if they allow that, then it's no longer wetlands. So it may show up on an in and in preliminary plan showing that it's wetlands, but it ends up being filled. Again, we're talking something small. They're typically.
But as small, please, Janelle.
I was just getting there. It's typically, I want to say a quarter acre to maybe a half acre, depending on what type of wetland it is that you can you can fill with a permit from the Army Corps and or Den and or Denrec, depending on what type it is. And then once that is filled, and again, that was for anybody anywhere in the state that is not specific just to to Lewis, then we would not recognize that as a wetland nor require that to have a buffer, because that is something that if I had a wetland of something of small scale on my property, I could go get a permit, legally fill it, and then not have. And then the intent is, since it would no longer be wetland, but it would be identified maybe on a preliminary plan as so as such, that it would not require a buffer.
Well, I guess, Janelle, I'm still not clear. A wetland, we define and something that the Corps and Denrec haven't given a permit for, we define it by its its nature as a landscape. So are you saying that? Well, is it the case that we can say, we don't care whether the Corps or Denrec has permitted it, we're not permitting wetlands without a buffer? We're not permitting wetlands to be filled.
That is not proposed in this ordinance. What this is is recognizing as that the Army Corps and Denrec have the ability to, and typically, they're isolated. Wetlands somewhere not connected to a water body. It's typically something small like that. Half acre, quarter acre, that they have the ability to fill as a private property owner, and that we would not be regulating as with a buffer.
Janelle, my question is, do we have the authority to say, we don't regard us as permits, you're not filling our wetlands?
That is a legal question I cannot answer because I don't know the how far we work with the jurisdiction of the Army Corps.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask one quick question while Glenn is thinking about his answer?
Can I ask one quick question while Glenn is thinking about his answer? I seem to recall this from a prior a prior ordinance issue. If 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 one does get a permit to fill wetlands, is am I correct that additional wetlands have to be created on the same site?
It depends on the type of wetland, the amount of wetland. Because if we're talking about these smaller wetlands, half acre to less, and I and I could be wrong on the actual size, it could be a little bit more, but it's typically half acre or less. You do not have to recreate that. And depending on the type, if it's an isolated and it's not connected to something else, then it they look at it slightly differently and they don't require an offset.
Okay, thank you.
I I have a question pertaining this particular issue. When you say a quarter to a half acre parcel, uh, how does that fit in the whole scheme of a major subdivision which this ordinance is directed towards? So in other words, you know, major subdivision is measured by number of houses, but it could that could also mean many acres. Could it not?
Yes. So think of think of like a large parcel of land and you've got, say, your title wetlands all next to your your creek or your river. And then you've got this little low spot out in the middle of nowhere that is maybe about a quarter acre in size. And it's been classified as wetlands because it's just a low spot. It might have something else going on, but it's been based on a few things. It's classified as wetlands, but it doesn't tie into what's going on with next to the creek. So typically, the Army Corps and or Denrick would grant a permit to fill that, recognizing it's non-contributing factors potentially towards the overall wetlands. The rest of that would be on a property.
So in effect, that little that wetland would be smaller than a half acre in size and it would be somewhat of an anomaly on the whole parcel. Is that correct?
That's typically what it is.
Pardon?
Typically, that's what it is.
Okay. And so so it's possible that that half a quarter acre could represent you know, you could have a three acre parcel land that's being subdivided into a major development, right? Major. And I'm just trying to get a proportionality between, you know, how much of this land could actually be affected by fill? And huh, that's it. That's okay.
So just to just to tack on to what Tim's saying, if I understand it correctly, I think they've been referred to in in the literature as orphaned wetlands.
Okay, that's
It's the idea that they aren't beneficial in the sense of what wetlands are generally beneficial for, which is floodplain maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. But that they're so small and isolated that they don't actually they don't actually serve that function. Is is that what's behind this?
That's typically what some of those are when we see them. Again, it could just be you have a low spot on your land. It's been designated as wetlands based on a few things, but it's not. Excuse me, it's not characteristic. It's not providing what we typically think of beneficial for wetlands. It doesn't tie into the rest of the wellens on the site.
So it's a standalone, correct?
Typically, yes.
Now moving on to below that table, there's a little three and a little four. In the little four, you have the wetlands wetland buffer.
Yes.
One of those?
Yes.
So do you have an updated version that that's not linked to on the website?
Yes, I I was working on it this afternoon based on some of your your comments.
Okay. But when we vote, we'll want to vote on the what's in front of us. And so did you delete the wetlands or wetland?
I deleted the first one, the wetlands.
Thanks.
Because it should be just it should not be plural.
Okay. Then in the next paragraph, 3A, it says development activity won't be authorized in certain areas without government permits. Then it says such allowable activities permitted may include, then there's a list. Does that mean they are permitted if Denrick or the Corps says they are permitted? Or do we still need to approve?
Well, it would you'd still have to approve it. But those are things that typically the Army Corps and or Denrick would typically approve. And then again, you would still see it as part of the development process.
But if they approve it, it doesn't end the inquiry. We still have to approve it too?
Typically, when an agency gives approval, they have approved something. But if you have concerns with it, then that's something you would work out. Because at the time you're reviewing it, typically when an agency is developments coming before you, they don't have all their agency approvals. If they're going to be working with Army Corps, they are definitely ahead of the game. Typically versus other agencies because Army Corps can take a very long time to get through.
I had the same question then on D1 and two of that same section then. So who every reasonable step, who who is that being judged by then? Denrick and the Army Corps or ultimately the city of Lewis?
Ultimately, the city of Lewis.
Well, I thought you told me that that would be. Okay. And how would that happen, Janelle?
Yeah. And who's the judge?
Sorry?
So Planning Commission would make a recommend review it, make a recommendation, and then it would come to mayor and city council. You would make a determination and you always have the ability to ask for professional review. So if you want an additional engineer or somebody else to review it, you have that authority.
The way it's written, it sounds as though it's just permitted by itself. And the applicant could say to himself, I've taken every reasonable step.
Right.
Right now, everything still requires review and approval by the commission and finally council. So the final decision rests with the city council.
And do we say that somewhere?
Well, that's just the way the subdivision regulations work.
Well, it also in subsection B, it says shall not be authorized. So I assume that's referring to the city's authorization.
Correct.
All right. Okay, then.
My question, because right above it says without approval from the US Army Corps of Engineers in Denricks. I didn't know that just flowed through and those approvals were
Right, that's how I read it.
So you have to get their approval and then you still have to get their approval does not trump the city's approval. The city has final authority.
But they have the underlying approval. You can't do anything without their blessing.
Correct.
We can make it more restrictive.
If they don't grant the approval, then you cannot grant the any development application.
Is it possible that they could grant approval and we would not grant approval?
That's always a possibility. That is in the code in the subdivision code that you can reject a subdivision application with reasons.
Well, Janelle, maybe we might be if we
We can clarify that.
Yeah, but not now, not yet. Let's let's get to the end of this discussion before you modify the ordinance beyond taking out the wetland. Because Glenn has advised us that we shouldn't be making the ordinance any more restrictive without another public hearing. So I don't want to do anything that might be read to make it more restrictive. Then
Is this picking up more restrictive or just making it clear who the actor is?
Right.
My thought it was more of a clarification.
Well, I agree. I I don't want to cross a line somewhere. How would you then make it clearer, Janelle?
I would just probably add that with, of course, with the approval of mayor and city council.
At the beginning of that.
Wouldn't you say major in subsection B, right? That's where we are, 3B?
I think we're in A also.
Oh, and A also. Well, yeah. For example, in B, it's a major subdivision activities such as permanent or temporary structures shall not be authorized by the city of Lewis. I mean, so it's clear the planning commission can't do it either. In wetlands or wetland buffers, except with following or met. So it's also interesting. This is a there's no discretion in this. If these these provisions aren't, if these requirements aren't met, there cannot be an approval, which is good.
The requirements are, I think you'd agree, rather subjective.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that they sure, I mean, what ordinance isn't, but has taken every reasonable step. I mean, it it doesn't say has taken reasonably reasonable steps, says every reasonable step to avoid adverse impact. That's pretty strong. And then and has provided appropriate mitigation for adverse impact. So you know, I sure, I mean, could you say that 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 you could let something that city could have let something through that that wasn't up to snuff? I suppose so, but I don't see that happening.
Anyway, Bonnie, I like your suggestion in B to add shall not be authorized by the city in wetlands or wetland buffers. That would work. And in A, perhaps we could say at the beginning of the second sentence, which starts such allowable activities permitted. Maybe we could say subject to city approval, comma, such allowable activities permitted. That would clarify it for for me at least.
Maybe the way to deal this with this in A is development activities shall not be allowed without prior authorization of and then go on and B to say city so that you you clarified that the step in A is that's all explained in A is has to occur before you get to the city.
I think A and B are addressing different activities, if I'm not mistaken.
I think they are too.
So we need to fix
I think they are.
Yeah, I'm just going to state major subdivision activities that automatically defaults to the approval of the council because that's who has authority to approve that. But we can add a language regarding the city into 3A.
And 3B, please.
I think it needs to go in A as well.
Yep, we'll take care. We have that.
So would what would it? How would it now read, Janelle, with your modification? A and B?
Well, B or A would be has you read it that subject to the city approval with the second line.
Right.
And and then B would be major subdivision activities shall be as permanent or temporary structures such as permanent or temporary structures shall not be authorized by the city. But at the city of Lewis and and so we just add by the city of Lewis.
Right.
After authorized.
That sounds great. Then in wetlands buffer with averaging, I think that's a bigger discussion. And I I don't propose to address anything that might make this ordinance more restrictive at this point. Then in the in I've got line 135. At some point, you use the word reference and you referenced passed in. Then the buffer management plan. It's the last subsection 5B, I think.
Yeah.
And it, let's see. Basically, you're saying the HOA is responsible for for preparing it. Well, no, the developer, the applicant's responsible for preparing it. And the HOA is responsible for maintaining the buffer, presumably in accordance with the plan.
Correct.
What happens if the HOA says, no, that's that's too expensive?
Well, then if we find out there's a violation, they would go through our violation process because it would be a violation of the zoning code.
I have a question about that. I'd like to tag on. One of my biggest problems with this whole ordinance is that it's predicated on the formation of an HOA. And there I don't believe there's any requirement that in a major subdivision that we that an HOA before.
So yes, and HOA would is required to be formed because they are responsible for the maintenance of the open space and your stormwater management facilities. So they already have to be created and have regulations on items they have to maintain for the development.
So Janelle, remind me.
Well, go ahead, Rob, please.
No, actually, I I didn't realize you hadn't finished your thought.
I had, but I'm now a little confused, but go ahead.
Just to back up, if I recall correctly, in any major subdivision, there's a requirement of a 10% set aside for open space. Is that right? So what you're saying, Janelle, is because there's open space and open space that has to be, you know, whatever it may be, mowed, taken care of, that there's a requirement that an HOA be created to to deal with with that that area.
Correct.
Got it right?
Yes. And they also have the stormwater management facilities. So your wet ponds, your dry ponds, they have to be responsible for those as well.
Isn't that really, isn't that really the Sussex County approach to Sussex to to stormwater management? And not necessarily with the city, how the city has approached stormwater management?
That is typically from everywhere I have worked is stormwater management is the responsibility of the homeowners association.
That's the states. It's the state stormwater regulations.
Right. And it is it is what is consistent here in in Lewis. If you look around at HOAs that have been developed within the last 30 years, all of them have stormwater maintenance systems and are responsible for maintenance. So the city doesn't assume any responsibility for them.
Yeah, I think that was for the last two I can think of for Mariners Street.
Anglers.
I guess, yeah.
Anglers, yeah.
It's a requirement, yeah.
But if you go back into the 80s, you'll find it at Babrees. They're responsible for theirs. So is Powhatan Village.
So, Janelle, you say that that would be addressed through the zoning code violation process. So that would be something that our code enforcement officer, if it were brought to his attention, would address with the HOA?
Potentially.
Well, potentially, would he address it or not? Or if not him, who?
He should be able to address it because it would be a violation of potentially a code requirement that they have to comply with.
So when you say potentially, what's the alternative?
Mr. Vandalis.
It would be legal, yes.
I mean, that would certainly be the where you would initiate the enforcement action is through the through the building inspectors department, through the code enforcement officer. And then you ratchet it up from there. You obviously, obviously, if the if you don't get results through you know, a letter and doing those sorts of things, then you issue issue a citation and take it to a state court and try to get applied.
Thanks. Well, I've those are my knits. And they are knits. Because to my mind, this is a wonderful step. In my my reading on wetland buffers, what appears to me the case is that they're of great value for protecting lands against flooding, against pollution, and for protecting some wild wildlife habitat, that they migrate. And one of the things this ordinance doesn't address is that the buffer can be expected to shrink as the wetlands migrate with sea level rise. So I would like to suggest that we do a couple of things tonight. One is to adopt this ordinance with as various minor modifications we've made to it. And that we simultaneously schedule a public hearing to consider other aspects of it that we don't want to other aspects of it that we don't want to address now, be for fear that they might make it more restrictive in Glenn's view, and thus require a new public hearing before we could even adopt this one. So I'd like to address this and suggest that we, we address this in two stages. Adopt this and schedule a public hearing to consider how we might make it a little, to my mind, less, or bolder. We, the comments we've received have all been that we're not being bold enough, we're not showing leadership. And I, I think that we, we could do more, but we want to hear from the public about it before we do. So, I mean, I, the, I don't mean to monopolize the discussion on this, but the mayor, if, if you think a motion would be in order, I've got one.
Well, I think let's hear from other people first. If there's anybody else that would like to comment, and then we'll get a motion. Also, Glenn, how do you, how do you feel about what he's proposing at this point in terms of adopting this ordinance, knowing it? Would we, would we want to refer it back to the planning commission to consider it, or would we want to tackle it at mayor council level?
So procedurally, I think, procedurally, I think that the process that's been laid out is appropriate because I didn't hear anything tonight that sounded amendments to the current ordinance would be more restrictive than what's currently on the table. They were mostly in lines of clerical and clarifying types of amendments. So I don't, so I think you could adopt tonight, you've already had the public hearing on this version of the ordinance. And you could schedule a public hearing for a new version of it. Obviously, that's going to need to get published in a newspaper 15 days in advance and all of the regular procedural matters that have to be taken care of on any zoning issue. But you could schedule that date to move the public, move the process forward. I would like to have the revisions, you know, prepared 15 days out in front of the public hearing, whatever date you schedule it, so that the public has the opportunity to see them, review them, and make knowledgeable, you know, informed comments on them. But yeah, the process works.
Okay. Glenn, if you want to comment?
Sorry, did you call on me?
Yeah, did you want to comment on anything? I know.
Uh, yeah. Well, first of all, I want to thank the planning commission and the public for working on this and, and coming up with something that I think is, is viable and durable. The second thing is to remind everybody that this particular ordinance applies only to major subdivisions. So we're not, at this point, it, it isn't any more broadly applicable than that. The, the, something that I think we should be worked on at some point, and I'll get to, to Rob's suggestion in a minute, is the, the wetland averaging, I think the point is to try to take into account where you have topographical anomalies that mean that you, you know, there's, there's some place, for example, let's say you have someplace where it's very clear that when the wetland migrates, it's going to go, call it in an easterly direction. But for whatever reason, because of the way the land is, is formed, it's not going to go in a northerly direction. So I think that's the purpose there. I think at some point, though, we might also want to consider whether to have some exception language, particularly as we go, as this ordinance in all probability is considered for expansion to, to other parcels in the city of Lewis. I will say, I mean, I'm not going to pretend that I'm a wetlands expert. I have appreciated the, the comments from people. It appears to me that the 50 feet that is recommended here in the two zones, the 20 and 30 foot zones, is, is a reasonable minimum and therefore makes sense. I do think that the whole point here is to be guided by the science. And it, I have to say, I appreciate the comments, but it, it, it's not persuasive to me that New Jersey has some other buffered number. I mean, I think what we need to do is look at what's applicable in the city of Lewis. I, I would be in favor of sort of two things. The first is that we, at minimum, and I don't know that this makes it more restrictive, but at minimum, put a five-year or a three-year or whatever people think is appropriate, review mechanism in this ordinance so that we actually can make sure that the ordinance stays consistent with what's happening literally on the ground, so that we, we make, we make sure that we, we do that. Moving forward, I, I, I don't, I don't agree with, with Rob's approach. And the reason is what we have here is supposedly, as I said, guided by science, right? There were hearings before the planning commission, the public weighed in. So I don't think it makes any sense to adopt an ordinance with the understanding that we're then going to turn around and adopt another ordinance. I mean, I, that seems pretty close to arbitrary and capricious to me, which is not appropriate. What I would be very much in favor of, however, is to ask the planning commission to look at this particularly with an eye towards expanding it to the rest of Lewis. And we give the planning commission whatever resources they request to, to get a consultant in to help with that. And consistent with that idea, I would also want to make sure that we ask Mr. Mandalis to consider what, if any, takings claims we may encounter as, as we go down this road. Because the last thing I'm, I'm willing to do is blindly put the city at risk of substantial takings claims liability. You know, it's one thing to do it knowingly, it's another thing to do it ignorantly. So that would be another thing that I would suggest as we move forward. So I think Rob and I are not far apart in the sense that I agree with him that additional work needs to be done. I simply don't think it's good practice to adopt, to adopt a, an ordinance in October and then amend it in November without some more significant work being done. So that's, that's my take on it.
Tim or Andrew, do you want to comment?
I will. I first just like to make a general comment as a new council person that I think as I was campaigning, there was potentially an assumption by some that there's not the rigor that actually goes into these decisions that there is amongst council and the, the back research that we do and looking at other resources and talking to experts of our own and relying on. So I just want to assure the public that, that does go on in issues such as this and even issues that you might consider minor that we'll talk about tonight. And also to that point, it's, both sides are considered. So Rob made the comment that, you know, all of the comments came in where there were a couple that were not in necessarily approving of buffers as, as a, as a whole. And I just want people to know that, that that's considered as well. And the impact, as Bonnie kind of mentioned, is, you know, what do these decisions imply for people that might be affected by our, our decisions? I'm on the side of that we need to have some type of buffer. So I'm, I'm probably somewhere between where Rob and Bonnie are. It'd be good to get something on. The general overall consensus from the community seems that we're not looking at this aggressively enough. And I, I do agree that we, we have to follow science here. It is happening. We do live in a sensitive area, so it's going to continue to affect. So I do think that we need to take measures. So with that being said, I'll hear further from the rest of my colleagues and I'll take action that I believe is the consensus of the group, because I think we all feel that something, something needs to get passed to get a step process or just put in something that we all feel is the correct product. I, I'll hear some more from my, my colleagues in terms of their opinions on that before I make my ultimate call.
Thank you. Tim?
I'm going to ask a question first. Is the, is Rob, Rob, would your idea be that if we go with approving this and then immediately move towards another review, would we commence that review? Is the expectation that that would be started immediately after we would have a hearing and then go, go into another study period? Is that what we're, what you're thinking?
That was my thinking, Tim. I wouldn't want to lose the momentum we've got of giving this some thought. I'm also a little bit reluctant to send this back to the planning commission once more, even if we adopt their current recommendation to ask them to to tackle it again. On the other hand, they are dealing with questions of sea level rise and
Right.
they are dealing with floodplain issues. So
Right.
perhaps when they have finished dealing with those, they can also look to see how that might modify their previous recommendation for buffers. So I'm not wedded to the idea of an immediate public hearing and putting Glenn to work on incorporating revisions. But I hate to lose the momentum that we've got in giving this the hard thought we-
Is it, would it be reasonable to expect, would you think in your mind that it, that a public hearing would be held in the next 90 days? Is that what you're thinking? Or in the next, within the next 30 days, within, and then launch the next study? Is that, is that what you're thinking?
I was thinking the next 30 days.
Okay. I, one of the things that I am really stumbling on with this particular draft is I remember at the meeting that we had on Friday, and I believe it was Janelle who described this ordinance as part of the puzzle. It was a puzzle in the piece of different planning commission subcommittee work, you know, that they have, the sea level rises, you mentioned. I believe there's a fill, a fill in the floodplain study going on, et cetera. And, you know, i- i- in the analogy of a puzzle, when you put a puzzle together, you typically have all the pieces in front of you before you try to fit all the pieces together. And it concerns me that I don't really know how this piece it will be affected by the work of those other subcommittees and in turn, the recommendations that are going to be, we should expect to be receiving from the planning commission. So I'd like to, you know, I, I like, I, I need to see the big picture at this point in time, but I'm really ready to get into the weeds on some of the language in this document as well. So I'm, yeah, go ahead.
I'm, I'm content to take Bonnie's approach, which is adopt this and ask the planning commission to fit this together with the other pieces of the puzzle and come back with the whole puzzle as you suggest, Tim. Does that work for you?
Should I add to that?
Yeah, please.
If we take this approach, I think some of the comments related to what subject matter experts were included, so that we may want to, we may want to be specific or at least highlight that other subject matters such as marine expert, you know, what, however we feel was missing potentially, that that's filled this time with, with subject matter experts.
Yes. I think the incorporation of information from experts is really critical here. That's one thing that we
Yeah.
You know, it's great, you know, it's, it's well, this is a well-written document and we, I think we, our conversation, our conversation here is helped clarify. But I think what we've heard from the public is we're missing some scientific background that we need to incorporate.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's wonderful to compare notes with what's going on down in Virginia Beach or wherever or New Jersey, but I think we really need something that's a little more specific to this area. And so if we were to do that, if we were to do as Rob is suggesting, adopt this ordinance, I think we would want to enable, if we went back to the planning commission, we'd want to enable them to have the benefit of a consultant who would work more specifically with the science of this.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. I do like the Bonnie, Bonnie's suggestion of putting this kind of, this ordinance on a three-year review. That's the reality of what the subject matter is. And as wetlands move, as they, well, as they move, as they grow, whatever is going to happen, I think it's important that this document, whatever is approved, is put on a schedule for frequent review and making sure that it is achieving what we expect it to achieve.
There are two comments in the chat that are worth reading. One says from Brent Jett saying the USACE approval is for actual wetlands. This ordinance is for a buffer. So there is a difference there. And then Sumner Crosby made a comment, says, I do not think migration was part of the buffer averaging consideration.
It was.
Okay.
There were a lot of conversations about migration and coming back in a couple of years and looking at it to make sure the, whatever's approved is actually working. That we spent, the committee, subcommittee spent a lot of time discussing those items.
Thank you.
Ted, can I jump in here and ask you to, would you read, would you read Brent's comment again about the, I think that was about the Army Corps? Is that right?
Hey, can I? Can I suggest that probably taking comment on this topic isn't appropriate since public hearing is closed? You're now at the point of debating and making-
Yeah, thanks. But they were just-
For that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So we have, you know, we've had a really good discussion here for nearly 45 minutes. What is your pleasure here? Are we ready to take action on this? Do we want to consider it further and bring it back next month? What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd, I'd move that we adopt the ordinance with the minor modifications we've agreed on by consensus tonight.
Is that with the, with the suggestion that Bonnie made that we would call for this to be reevaluated within three years?
Yes, but I don't know quite how to put that in. Maybe Glenn has an idea of how to incorporate that.
Well, one way of doing it is you, you can do it so it's codified, or you can do it within the ordinance as a final section. It doesn't actually get codified in the code. The risk of doing that is that everybody forgets about it three or five years from now when it doesn't, and it doesn't happen. So where would that be appropriate? Janelle, you're the primary author. Do you have any thoughts on where?
I'm trying to look.
Thanks, I'm looking too.
Maybe G under purpose. We added G1A that says this ordinance shall be reviewed for consistency with the purpose after three years from the date of adoption.
I, I would put the date specific. If you put three days, three years from the date of adoption, it-
Yeah, I just don't have the date, so, yeah.
If we assume it's today, right.
Yeah.
Place to do it, you know. Good call.
So with three years, I mean, do you want to make it two? I, I do think that particularly, you know, as the, as the, as we all know, as the water table rises and that contributes to, you know, to the overall profile here, it, it might be a better, it might be a good idea to make it two years, just so we're, we're sure we're keeping our fingers on the pulse here.
I think I would go for the shorter one, Bonnie. I agree with you. Otherwise, you know, it would, it's a long time.
All right. So i- if we do do that, the term is not important at this point in time for me right now at this moment. So is the burden of making sure that it is reviewed with that, is that, does that fall on Janelle to make sure that the planning commission reviews it in whatever term is agreed? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that, he's going to be, that Janelle will be the administrator of that, is that correct?
Yes. But it's incumbent upon each of us as members of council to make sure that it happens, you know, that we don't and that we authorize whatever scientific consulting we want, we want to provide.
So with all that, I'd, I'd like to second Rob's motion. And then after we vote on that, I'd like to make another motion, Jermaine, to this.
Okay.
But was Rob finished? I'm not sure he was.
Oh.
Rob, you've muted yourself. We can't hear you. Rob, you've muted yourself. Rob, you've muted yourself. Rob?
Yes, got it.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's hard to toggle back and forth between Zoom and the, and the, and the document. I turned it off because the phone rang. Uh, Bonnie, thank you, but I didn't include in my motion the review period. So may I amend the motion to
Absolutely.
So I would also move that we adopt the, the resolution with the minor modifications we've made plus a two-year review period incorporated into the purpose section as discussed.
Next.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Um, I have a question. Does a discussion include a question? Bonnie, didn't you suggest also put forth the idea of expanding this to the entire town, to the entire city? Is that correct?
No. Not tonight. What, what I, the second, the motion that I was going to propose after we deal with the, uh, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance is before us now, was to remand this issue to the planning commission with a request that the planning commission employ, as, as Andrew said, appropriate subject matter experts to look at, um, to look at whether to enhance the, the ordinance. And that could mean make it broader, it could mean other things. I think there's, this sort of did, the, the number of feet is important, but I don't think it's the exclusive consideration here. So that's where I was going with that. Because I, I do think ultimately we're looking at, at, at whether or not, and if so, how to expand the wetlands buffer idea to wetlands throughout the city. I think that's just logical.
But that's down the
Down the road, absolutely, it's not for tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right.
So we have a
And if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a, and we have a second. Call the question, call in favor.
So can I ask that it's a zoning ordinance, so can we please
You want to do a roll call?
Remember, you can rely upon other people's reasons for voting the way they vote. And also, just to be clear, this recording will set the record of what changes were made, some earlier by councilperson Morgan, one more recently to make it a two-year review period. Janelle, you're confident you have all those that we talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
I have all of them by line items and the changes.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Rob, you want to go first?
Sure, I, I vote to approve the ordinance because wetlands are an important way of protecting the city in several different ways. And the zoning, I mean, the, um, planning commission has given this careful thought and come up with a good product period.
Okay. Okay. Tim, you want to comment?
Could you call someone else first?
Andrew? I'll go. Again, I know that this ordinance is probably going to disappoint people on both sides. Those that felt tonight they would like to see something more aggressive immediately get passed, and those that would not like to see no buffers remain. I think it's important, as Rob said, to protect the wetlands as a community. We, I, I think it's good to lead in that. And in fact, in looking at it, Kent and Newcastle County having existing buffers needs to take action on, on our, um, area here. So I will vote yes to approve what's in front of us, with the hope that we can, again, put it back in front with additional subject matter experts.
Okay. Bonnie, you want to comment, do you want to vote?
Uh, yes. First of all, I think, I think the planning commission has done an admirable job and kudos to staff, that would be Janine, for helping them through the process. This is, as Janine said, and as Tim mentioned, it is a part of a bigger puzzle. We obviously have, um, and a lot of important climate change related issues facing the city. And so the point here is to do what we can for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens. And this is the first step. And I think it's, it's well thought out and it provides immediate protection in the, in the, for, for the types of developments covered within it. It's appropriate as, as a zoning mechanism. I think it amplifies the work that the city has done in the past with respect to protection of, of wetlands, protection of floodplains. But there's obviously more work to do. So I would vote in favor of putting down our, our first marker. And then we can talk in a second about the next marker.
Okay. Tim, are you ready to vote?
Yeah, I'll just agree with my peers and go ahead and vote to approve it with the understanding that we are going to be, there will be further review from the planning commission with subject matter experts participating in their discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I would agree with what's been previously said. And again, recognizing Janelle for the work that she's put into putting this together. Thank you very much, Janelle, and the entire planning commission. This has not been an easy task. I think Andrew's correct in saying that we're not going to please everyone with this. And I do have some concerns that perhaps, you know, this may need to be more, more restrictive than it is. Uh, and, but we knew, we do need scientific data to help make us make these decisions. I think this is a good first step, as has been said. And I look forward to seeing this come back. I think we are just at the beginning of a serious conversation about how we're going to deal with all of this. And the planning commission has done a yeoman's job of, of bringing this forward in many different aspects. So I thank them for their efforts and look forward to what we're going to do with this as we go forward. I don't, I don't anticipate that there'll be any delay in picking this up and working with it as a LPC schedule allows. But I do want to keep this moving in a, in a positive direction and make sure we get funding that's necessary to bring in a consultant to provide the services. So I vote in favor. So motion carries. Bonnie, you had another motion that you want, another topic you want to bring up?
Uh, no, I, I, I do have a follow-up motion, if you're willing to indulge it, which is, it, it basically formalizes what a number of, of members of council have said. So my motion is that we remand the issue of wetland buffers to the planning commission with a request that it employ subject matter experts, since we need to be, we need to be guided by the science, to, to take a good look at Lewis, not other places, but what we are in fact, as Ted just said, what we're facing here, what our combination of, of challenges are. And come back to, to council after appropriate public hearings, come back to council with mod, proposed modifications of the ordinance that we just adopted separately. And this isn't part of my motion. If, if we were to have gone to tonight, uh, to some of the buffer widths that, that were suggested by people, um, and, and that were to be applied to, to existing parcels of land, we would, we would really cause, um, a, a great restriction and change on the people's ability to use the land that they have. So if we, if the, if the planning commission comes back with recommendations that would have a significant direct impact on parcels, I would like to get Mr. Mandalas's guidance on what the legal implications for that would be to the city. Because you, you, we, we have to look and see where the science is going to take us, but we also have to look at the effect on our, our citizens. And also if, and also our legal liability, which is also about our citizens. So that's not part of the motion, but down the road, if, if that matures in that kind of way, I do think we need to have both the science guidance and the legal guidance.
Okay.
You've got a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving then on to item G2, presentation possible action on the proposed city of Lewis personnel manual. Anne Marie and Christine Roy and Anne Calmery have worked hard on this. And this rather lengthy document is a long overdue update of our employee personnel manual. And we've had a chance to look at it. I know some of us have made comments more extensively than others, but I think it represents an excellent piece of work. And I appreciate the fact that it's been brought up to, uh, more or less where we are today. So, and open it up for discussion. Or Anne Marie, would you like to talk about it first?
I said, so I do have a, a presentation. This is, um, similar to the presentation staff got, but it, it does have a little more detail. So let me share my screen. All right. So, you know, why is it being updated? I mean, I think, Mayor, you kind of hit the nail on the head. It's been a long time. There are practices that have evolved over time that aren't reflected in it. There are state and, and federal laws that, that aren't referenced that we do follow, but we need to, you know, again, just bring it all together under that umbrella. We've added some sections, um, a glossary of terms, responsibilities for managing information and serving the public, general provisions, employment at will, and the comp time policy, which had previously been a pilot policy. Notice of pregnancy, which again is, is a requirement, a legal requirement, and inclusion of the Fair Labor Standards Act and FMLA, um, which again are, are legal requirements. So we're, again, just referencing those, those, um, legal, those pieces of the legal framework. So in this one, we have, we're just kind of walked through some of the changes and then some of the comments we've gotten from our employees. In this case for absence from work or tardiness that we're saying, we're clarifying, you need to, to give at least 30 minutes notice. Don't, you know, call it five after seven if you're supposed to be there at seven and say, I'm running late or I'm not going to be here. The, the meal break, um, doesn't, it, there, it doesn't give a whole lot of, um, of parameters on when the meal break applies. Under the state regulations, if anybody works more than seven and a half hours, they're entitled to a meal break and, or a break. And we, we have an eight-hour day with an hour paid lunch. So actually, we don't work, our, our staff does not work seven and a half hours. So we wanted to make it, so it was clear at what point the break comes in. So that if, you know, if you, if you work a half day, you work in the morning, you're not entitled to that lunch break. So, um, we've made it clear that you have to work six hours, um, in a day to, to qualify for that break. And you have to leave your work area. And that supervisors have discretion over scheduling of the lunch break. Overtime hours, um, this, I actually added this slide just today because we did make a change. We added the word not. As it relates to overtime, what we're saying is if you work, um, 40, if you work more than 40 hours a week, you're entitled to overtime, and that's under the Fair Labor Standards Act. But that means hours worked. It doesn't count sick leave, vacation leave or jury duty, it's actual hours worked. So that, that's something that we, we put in there after it went through our legal review. Vacation accrual, right now, um, for the, the first 10 years of employment, you accrue eight hours per month. The next 10 years of employment, you accrue 12 hours per month. And then if you, if you're 20 or more years, you accrue 16 per month. We're, we're recommending that it be broken, that the first 10 years be broken into two increments that for the first, it says zero to four, but it would be four point, you know, up until that fifth year, um, you would accrue eight and then accrue at a slightly higher rate. And then after 25, you would accrue 18 hours per month. We clarify that the anniversary date is, um, what that's based on. So it's not, it doesn't align with calendar year. And a completed month of service is considered fif, the 15th of the month. And that's how our system is set up now, leave accrues on the 15th of the month. And then right now, the, the, um, the handbook does not allow employees to use any sick or vacation time during the first six months. We are saying under, under this, that employees would be able to start using vacation leave after three months. Um, we did get employee comments on this. They suggested that we add another five-year interval so that, that, um, right now, we, our recommendation is from 10 to 19 years, you would get 12 hours a month. There, um, one of our employees has, has suggested that we add a 15 to 19-year increment where you would accrue 14 hours per month. We also have at, um, December every year, people can sell back vacation. So employees who earn up to 144 hours a year can sell back one week. And employees who, um, earn 192 hours of vacation in a year can sell back two weeks. What, what we've recommended is for employees who, who earn 96 hours, they would stay at 40 that they could sell back. Once an employee can earn 120 hours, we'd allow them to sell back 48 hours, up to 48. And it would have to be in eight-hour increments. And, um, at 144 hours a year, they could sell back 56 and then 168, which is the, the top of that tier, you're, you're, um, able to sell back eight or 80, which is the same as it is now. For sick leave, um, currently employees receive one, they can accrue one day of sick leave per completed month. And that again, is as of the 15th of the month. An employee can accumulate a maximum of 130 days. If they accrue more than that, then it, it resets to 130 days on January 1st. Employees can be paid out for 130 days upon separation. And that, that is not related to retirement. That is, anybody who leaves gets paid out their sick leave up to 130 days. Now, to put it in perspective, to earn 130 days of sick leave, um, you would have to work a little over 10 years and never take a sick day. So somebody who, um, you know, works six years is not going to get paid out 130 days because they simply would not have that. Um, and right now, sick leave cannot be used until after the, the six-month introductory period. What we're proposing is that employees would still accumulate the one sick day per full month and the completed, again, the completed month is considered the 15th of the month. We're suggesting, again, instead of not allowing people to use it for the first six months, because that, that is tough, I'm going to tell you. It, it, there is always something that comes up. Our, what we're recommending is that after three months, people could use their sick leave. And employees who, who have three or more consecutive sick days would be required to have a, um, doctor's note. And then, again, I, I believe, and I, I know a number of the council people, um, know my thoughts on this. Often, the payout of sick leave is really a retirement benefit. It's not something that is often paid to any employee who separates. So we, we are recommending kind of pulling that back some. For one to nine years, you could get paid up to 96 hours, 10 to You could get paid up to 96 hours, 10 to 19 years, 520 hours, which is 65 days. So it's three months instead of six months. And then 20 plus years, again, that's really when you're at the retirement level. We're suggesting that it would be that 1,040 hours is the same as 130 days. So obviously, because this does change something that, that is a current benefit. We did get some comments from staff. We had some staff requests that this be grandfathered, similar to how we've done with the, the retirement contribution and the, the health insurance premium that, that we would have a tiered system for employees, you know, working as of a certain date. There were five employees who submitted comments sharing concerns about just ending this benefit and not grandfathering. They, they feel that it penalizes the employees that are hardworking and not calling out sick. And they, they think it's going to encourage people to call out sick. So, so that is something that we did get some, some response from the workforce. I will say that the flip side is, we have in our, you know, recommended manual, there would be a, a small increase in vacation accrual and vacation sellback. So, you know, I, I struggle with grandfathering kind of the, the trade off. Because I can't imagine that you would grandfather the accrual side of it. The other thing that a number of people brought up is, has the city considered allowing people, employees to donate sick leave? There were three employees that mentioned this. The state of Delaware, I know, has a leave donation policy. Now, the way that the state's policy works, if you, it's hour for hour. If, if you want to donate leave, you donate an hour of vacation and an hour of sick leave. And the person, the recipient gets one hour of sick leave out of that. So there's, there's a net loss. And I think that that, the, the purpose of that is because that makes sure that the, you know, if you, if you have your lower wage employees donating and the higher wage employer, employees are, are using it, it, it's a net cost. So I think that helps to, to neutralize the cost. So it is something, what I've said to, to the staff is, I don't think it's realistic in this initial, you know, this manual at this point. But if council's interested in exploring that, we could research what other places do in terms of sick leave donation and, and come back with a recommendation. Currently, we have 12 paid holidays. You, you may recall that for this current year, 2020, we gave up Columbus Day, which is today, and replaced it with the floating holiday. We, in the, in the manual, have, the other thing you'll, you'll probably recall that this year, we added Juneteenth as a holiday for this year. You know, it, it was, I think, with a day or so notice. So it wasn't a planned holiday, but we followed suit with what the state did. What we've done in this draft is we've replaced Columbus Day with Juneteenth. So no floating holiday, but we, we've swapped out Columbus Day for Juneteenth. We do have a half day for return day on election years. And election day is a, a day off in the, in the even numbered years, which are the election years in Delaware. So, one of the comments we received was that employees voted on whether Columbus Day, whether they wanted Columbus Day or a floating holiday. They, you know, there are some people who would rather vote on it again, or just add Juneteenth and keep Columbus Day. There are some people who are concerned about losing Columbus Day. So I think those are things that, that we need to discuss. Educational assistance. We, we're proposing that we add something that allows for prepayment. Because paying and having to, to carry that cost until you are complete, until you've completed the class and receive your grade, I think really makes it difficult for the, the, the employees who, who have a lower wage to be able to, to take advantage of this benefit. So we've added language that would allow prepayment. But of course, if they don't get the C or better, they would have to pay back. And, and there is with the employee, with the educational assistance, if the employee leaves within two years, they have to pay back what, what the city paid. Bereavement, we currently have three workdays for immediate family. What we have recommended is something that's in the police department contract. And that would be three days for immediate family and one day for an extended family member. We replaced the, the types of discipline with a progressive discipline policy that goes from counseling to failure to improve is anything from termination to demotion. Gifts and gratuities. We added some language to, to say that, well, right now, it says that pretty much at Christmas time, you can't take gifts except at Christmas time. And it can't be in exchange for the expectation of anything inappropriate. What, what we are suggesting is that we not limit it to Christmas time, because there are other times that there was an example where the, the maintenance department went out and they did, they really helped to clean up an eyesore issue. And one of the neighbors came out and, and gave them money to, to buy lunch. So that was then given to the supervisor. And a couple of weeks later, they, they planned a day and they did a big lunch. So what we're saying is, as long as things are shared, that it's not a, you know, you, you slide me some money and I take your trash or whatever, that, that as long as things are shared and that, again, it's not being used for gain, that the people, again, it's, it's, it's a challenge because you don't want expensive gifts. But there is a, a very much embraced tradition here in Lewis, where the, the people of Lewis treat our staff very well. And we, we don't want them to, to not be able to take part in that. So we did get an employee comment suggesting that we address tips at the marina. Because the, the marina, so it, it's technically been against the policy, but it's never been really discussed. So the, the marina staff have always gotten tips. So it, it has been suggested that we add something to allow tips for marina employees. So we, we, we changed some of the stuff on uniforms and work boots. It's, and actually, we did a, a more recent change. This says that a new, newly hired employee will have their initial pair of safety boots after their first three months. We talked about it the other day. I think if, if we're putting somebody on the back of a trash truck, we should make sure they have their safety shoes at the beginning of, of the three months, not at the end. So, so we are going to, that is something we've, we've changed. We did add a section on internet and email. And actually, based on councilperson Morgan and deputy mayor Osler's suggestions, we, we did add a, a line in there that says that there's no expectation of privacy. You know, if, if you're using your, your city computer or your city email service, there should be no expectation of privacy. We added to, to employee recognition that there could be other forms of recognition. And then the other thing that, that we added, again, just the other day, and I did not update it in this, is that we made it clear that the Bisbee Award is for regular, full-time employees. We have, under smoke-free, tobacco-free environment, the underlined language, we expanded it to e-cigarettes. One of the things, in, in talking with Mayor Becker, I'm going to add language to make it, make it clear that, one, this is also about health. It's not, it's not just about appearance. And what was the other thing, Mayor? Oh.
It applies to all, every, all locations, you know?
Right, it applies to all, all locations, in vehicles. And, oh, and, and to make it clear that it applies to parks and beaches because they, by code, are not allowed to smoke. It's prohibited. One of the other comments that we got, and I think it was more than one person. The state and the federal government have both implemented parental leave for birth or adoption of, of a child. So that, that is a 12-week paid leave that is not part of the sick leave program. The question came up whether the city would consider adding this benefit. Again, I think if we're talking about a, a major expansion of a benefit like that, that would have to be considered separately from an update of the, the manual. And then, tired of hearing that we're following the state, we're not the state, we're the city of Lewis, and we took the jobs here with the benefits listed. I, I think, you know, again, people, people value their benefits. It, it is part of our compensation package. And they, you know, I guess they, they want to make sure that we don't reduce benefits to follow the state. Still in the works, we are working on a recruitment policy, policy for take-home vehicles, and then a larger technology use policy. So that's what I have. Again, I know that's kind of detailed, but I wanted to kind of give you a sense of, one, what the major changes were from the, the manual that's in place now and what we're proposing, but also then what we've heard from the employees. So I don't know if you have any questions. And, and again, Christine was really the workhorse on this. And it, it's been a lot of collaboration with Ellen Lorraine and Christine and myself.
Anne Marie, could you just revisit the current policy with regards to selling back of sick time versus where you're looking, the change you're making now?
Yeah, so it's not, so it's not selling back, it's cashing out when you leave. Where vacation, you can sell back every year. So that's, but, so for sick time, right now, the, it, we, if an employee leaves, they get paid out all of their sick time up to 130 days. So if, if you leave, you know, if you leave after three years, it's whatever you've accrued and not used in three years. Again, I, most places, I, I'm not aware of anywhere else that offers payment of sick leave other than retirement. I mean, I'm sure that it's out there somewhere. So that was one that I thought, because that's, that's a pretty big liability that we carry. So that, what we've suggested is, instead of 130 days, for the first 10 years, you would be able to, it's something, I think, 12 days. We, we would allow you to sell back, we, we would allow, we'd pay you out for 12 days. And then from 10 till 20 years, it's, it would be, I'm trying to do the math. 520 hours, which is 65 days. And if it's over 20 years, then it would be the 130 days. Just to, to be, 120 days is six months. So think about, I mean, that, that's a big, that, that's a large amount of, of leave. And again, that, the number of people that are going to have that, that have that much leave, that haven't been here for 20 years, probably isn't that many. But, but it is when, when somebody leaves, that's a pretty big payout in addition to vacation time.
The streets department people that retire, that left us earlier this year, did they come close to having 130 days? Perhaps Ellen Lorraine is best able to answer that.
Oh, and Janelle just told me that, that the county does pay out sick time. So.
I believe one may have been close to that cutoff.
Okay.
Just.
Thank you.
Anne Marie, there was a, there is a comment in the chat about the size of the staff. I don't know if you're able to.
So we, we have 38 employees?
Right.
Total?
Yeah, I think you're right.
One, one question came up about, you know, the generosity of our benefits compared to other similar organizations. You know, in, in terms of holidays and vacation, we're comparable to other, other governmental employers. And the, for the police union, their accrual and the holidays are all in the, in the contract. So if we were to change it in the manual, it would only apply to the civilian workforce, which would create an inequity there.
Could I make a comment? First of all, Christine, this, I know how much work it is to come up with one of these things and make it match. So kudos to you. This, this means you either are or are no longer interested in this line of work, would be my guess. But it, it really, it's very hard. And there's a lot of, there's all kinds of implications every time you, you begin to fiddle with benefits. I also want to make just a general comment about, about the benefits that we pay our staff. The benefits are pretty generous. But I, I just want people to, to recognize, particularly people listening in, that the payoff for the citizens is that we have, at least in my experience, we have very low turnover in the civilian workforce. And that is savings in and of itself, both in terms of training and recruitment. And, you know, the old saying, for the first year, you're in a job, you do your old year, your old job for a year. I mean, there's, there's a lot of benefits in it, both in terms of, of retention and even more importantly, in morale. I mean, if you, if you look at the list of our employees, you will see a lot of longevity, which is a tremendous benefit in the quality of service, the attitude of our employees. So I, I didn't want that to slip by. I mean, the, the, the benefits are, are important, but they, they have a qualitative and quantitative benefit to the city. There's a lot of stuff in here that I want to spend a little more time with. Thank you for not asking us to vote tonight. In particular, I saw a, a sick leave, a voluntary transfer of sick leave bank work in the federal government. And I don't know quite how to structure it here with such a small workforce, but I do think it's a very, a very important idea to, to, to check on. So, thank you, and thanks for updating it. I know this has been a project that's been unfinished for the entire time that I've been on council. So thank you for doing it.
Other comments from council? I think we'll get some more feedback over the next few weeks on this. I think probably you presented a lot of information. I presume your PowerPoint presentation would be available online, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's attached to the agenda.
Okay.
So, and, and.
This is the personnel manual for anybody out there who wants to read the whole thing.
Oh, yes.
The entire personnel manual is there. I did not see the attachment, so.
And if you do want us to, to, over the next month, look at how the, the sick leave donation is done in other places. I, I just, I'm familiar with the state. That's the only employer I've had that's done it. So, but I'd be glad to come back with that, because I agree. It, it is a very, it is, allows employees to share their own generosity with, with their colleagues.
Yeah, and I don't remember exactly how it worked in the federal government, which is, you know, obviously a big kahuna. But I, my recollection is that there was, there was sort of a certification that someone was. I I my recollection is that there was, there was sort of a certification that someone was in need of leave, meaning that they had exhausted their own leave and that they in fact had a, you know, a bona fide illness. And I think I you'll have to check me on this, but I think that the the bank of ours, you you couldn't as an employee say, well, I want to help, you know, uh, Tom, or I want to help, you know, Janelle, rather, the bank was available for based on need, not on, you know, which which is a a good thing, too.
And we have had occasion within the city where people have exhausted their leave due to long term illness, so.
Right.
I know at the state, it was actually different than that. It was it with the state, I remember when I worked at Denrec, it was not uncommon to get an email that said, you know, so and so is on leave and needs sick leave donation. Is anybody interested? So people, you know, if it's somebody that you really, oh, my gosh, she's such a great person, you know, it 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 kind of.
I may be misremembering.
Anyway, well, if you would look into that, provide bring us back some feedback, Emily, that'd be helpful. So I think we'll bring this back next month uh for considerations. That way uh everybody has a chance to review it and uh, Rob, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point? Rob, did you have anything you need to, you wanted to add? I guess he can't hear us. Tim or Andrew?
No, I didn't have anything. I guess the one thing, um, Emily is what when what was your deadline? Like, when you actually looking at this document for the end of the year?
Well, so so in our our discussion the other day, um, we would like for this to go into effect January 1. So, you know, if it turns out that there are things that need more discussion, then we can get done before the November meeting, we we could, but I really do want to try to have it done before December. Um, and, you know, it I know some of the the comments I've received were about the generosity of our benefits and and, you know, so what I don't know is kind of where the the sense of council is of, you know, are we, you know, are you comfortable with what what we have in general? So it's some, you know, if you have some feedback, I I can take it, you know, outside of the meeting as well. Just get.
Okay, good. I would the other sections that you're still working on be completed between now and November as well?
Those would be separate policies.
You would do those as separate policies? Very good.
Ted, this is Rob. When you invited me to speak, I I heard Bob, and I wasn't sure who.
I was saying, Rob, I'm sorry.
No, my 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 failure to hear you clearly.
No problem.
I had nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I wasn't, I I saw your microphone wasn't off, so I thought, well, you know.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. I think we could move on to move on to item G3, which is discuss some possible action on proposed environmental protection chapter of the Lewis City Municipal Code covering gas powered landscaping equipment and current littering and outdoor smoking chapters. Uh, Rob, you've taken the lead on this. You want to talk to us about this a little bit?
I'd be glad to. There's a couple of different aspects of it. First, this incorporates three topics. Um gas powered landscaping equipment, littering and outdoor smoking. The latter two, we already covered in our code. We're just moving them into here. There's not a lot of change to this other than cleanup. Um, I noticed that on lines 36 to 37, there's a bracketed comment that needs to come out. Um and likewise, line 44, a little cleanup is needed. 67 also. And there are various bracketed comments where I tried to explain oh, the the cleanup changes, and I hope we can take those out before we if we adopt this before we uh ma- make it final. The third thing that's done, that the substantive thing is to address gas powered landscaping equipment. And I've consulted with our colleagues and I'm hopeful that uh, this is timid enough, although a step in the right direction, that it's generally acceptable. And what we've done is to say to ourselves gas powered landscaping equipment is a source of pollution, not just minor annoyance, but it's pollution. And the the worst villain is two stroke uh engines. They are less efficient and more polluting. Two stroke engine equipment is readily uh replaceable by four stroke equipment. There has been concern that if we banned all gas powered landscaping equipment, that the battery powered equipment that's in the uh that that would replace it is not is not yet technologically sophisticated enough. So what we're trying to do is is to clean up the city a little bit, to protect our air, protect in particular the air that is breathed by the the people who carry this equipment on their backs for hours at a time. They're breathing it and it's, uh, we, I think we have a responsibility to the fairly low paid people that are doing the city's work. So I would urge us to take this small step and to adopt a ban effective over two years from now on a subset of gas powered landscaping equipment, which is the two stroke variety.
Other comments from the table?
I've 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 got a couple. Rob, you're gonna have to educate me. I don't know the difference between a two stroke um landscaping piece of equipment and a four stroke. Can can you, I I simply don't know, and and I have no idea, since I don't know the difference, I don't know which is in common usage by homeowners and landscapers in the city of Lewis.
If I tried to explain that, Bonnie, I would embarrass myself. I've I don't know internal combustion technology.
Well, I mean, your average lawnmower, is that a two stroke or a four stroke? I mean, if I go to Ace and buy a Toro.
Most lawnmowers are four stroke. That the two stroke engines, you have to do a gasoline oil mix. So that like your weed whacker.
That was my last lawnmower.
Okay, right. So there are two stroke lawnmowers, but but most of the lawnmowers out there are four stroke at this point.
Okay, what about all that? Because this this covers all other equipment. I mean, blowers, I don't know what a weed eater is, trimmers. Wha- what are all of that? I mean, obviously, if you have a battery operated when you're not running afoul of this, right? Because this is limited to a a gas powered. Yeah, or plug in, right. What what I'm trying to get at is what what is going to be the practical effect, both both for people who, you know, have this equipment which lasts longer than two years, at least mine does. Um, and also on the landscaping companies, because, you know, we have a lot of people in Lewis who hire landscapers and if we're now going to say to them, you can't use the equipment that you use every in every other community, that's going to represent a cost which is going to get passed on to our citizens. So um, so what what I I guess I'm having trouble understanding exactly what we're talking about here.
It's my understanding that of the professional landscapers are graduating away from um, th- they have graduated away from two stroke engines, that these are largely uh equipment used by individuals. The idea of putting it off by two years, which is two full um uh summer seasons, is to allow people to get some use out of their existing two stroke equipment. But it's, it may be that it's a slight hardship on people who could still eke more use out of their two stroke engines. But think about what it's doing in the meantime. It's fouling our air. It's fouling the, in particular, the air of that is breathed by the operators. And it's imposing a cost on all of us.
Well, yeah, but if you just said that basically Anne Marie just said most most lawnmowers are four stroke, you just said most landscapers don't use two stroke. So what are we really chasing here? I mean, it doesn't, from the sounds of it, it doesn't sound like a major pollution issue to me, if if in fact people have gone beyond this already.
This is a baby step.
Well, what's the next step?
There may not be one, but we'll see how this is, how this works.
Yeah, I I think I provided you all some information that I had received from a couple of landscapers last month when we first talked about this. Uh, and we took it off the agenda. And the information I got back was that, you know, some of these landscape, most of these landscapers are mowing 25 to 30 lawns a day and that battery operated blowers are just not there yet in terms of being able to use them uh to do the job. Either they, the battery does, the charge doesn't hold long enough. Um, and the two, uh, but well, three people that I got information from all attend the landscaper uh convention, which I guess handled, happens in Kentucky annually in the fall. And so they're going to look at uh term, they're going to look at technology that's coming out and they report, I doubt that it happened this fall, but they report that when they went last year that the batteries were not there yet in terms of, uh, and so they would anticipate a significant cost in acquiring batteries and and it would be impractical for them uh to continue to do that. Um, you know, if they're working eight to 10 hour days, they would need multiple batteries in order to do that. Um, they also expressed concern about leaf blowers and things like that, which many of which are two stroke engines as well. So I think Bonnie's right in terms of um, it would possibly re- result in a larger expense for those people who hire landscapers. Uh, I I my only concern is the timing on it of, you know, I think we'll get there, Rob, and do we want to do something prospectively uh like this, or do we want to do it, you know, with an idea that we is this something that we need to, that we need to codify, or is it an ordinance, or is it something that we should look at as something we want to continue to monitor?
I, rather than doing nothing, I'd rather do something. And by applying it, we would do something. It is prospective. It's, it gives people two years to adjust. And it's a very small stroke. Well, it's it's a very.
Pardon the bun?
And too soon.
Yeah, right.
Is there such a thing as a four stroke? Uh, which sounds to me, sounds bigger than a two stroke. Is there such a thing as a four stroke leaf blower?
I'm not aware of one.
No.
So we're basically banning leaf blowers.
Right.
Well, I don't think so. Um, we've.
That are not battery operated or electric.
There's electric and like and battery operator.
Well, I I have to, I have to second what, I I just got a battery lawnmower um this year, and I have a relatively small yard. And my battery will just last long enough to do my small yard.
So you suggesting that we should allow two stroke engines so that the air can continue to be polluted?
Well, I I I don't, with all due respect, Rob, I I I just, I don't think that this is, this is a major cause of pollution. I mean, it may be a major cause of noise. My mother used to refer to landscapers as mow, blow and go. I mean, so, you know.
Me, Bonnie?
There there, there is noise, but I'm having, I I mean, and I'm just having, I I just think about it. If you told, if if we're, if we're about basically getting rid of leaf blowers, right, and I'm not a fan of leaf blowers either. However, if you're then saying that a landscaper would have to bring in sufficient uh people power to do this manually, you know, to rake and to collect and all of that, that or to do what what leaf blowers can do better than most things, which is to get leaves out from, you know, bushes. Um, you're talking about a pretty, potentially a pretty significant increased cost to uh to the people who use, who use landscapers.
Well, I th- I think, Bonnie, you may have forgotten or not had a chance to read the article I sent to you from Edmunds. They compared the pollution put out by a standard Home Depot leaf blower. Uh, they actually got several of them with a 411 horsepower, 6.2 liter V8 Raptor. And they found that you'd have to run the Raptor across country in order to to pollute as much as 45 minutes on a leaf blower. This is a major source of pollution. I I'd be glad to send you the article again.
Well, I I also would like to have a better understanding of exactly what we're doing here. I mean, we're first, we talked about four stroke versus two stroke, and you said, oh, well, you know, most everything's a four stroke. Well, now we talk about leaf blowers, and it turns out most of them are two stroke. So we're actually effectively talking up for the gas powered ones, effectively talking about banning them. So I really want to understand what it is we're doing here.
Um, it seems to me you're you're saying two different things. You started out saying, well, if there if there aren't many two leaf, two stroke leaf blowers, then what are we doing? We're not doing anything. Now you think we're doing too much. Are you willing to try to stem the pollution that leaf blowers cause is the question?
I am willing to balance the potential harms from leaf blowers against the cost and inconvenience to our citizens. It's not an absolute. I think there, so that's why I'm trying to understand what it is we're talking about doing here.
The cost and inconvenience to our citizens, to my mind, includes polluting their lungs.
Well, that brings me to smoking. Um, did you say this was, I I had a question about this. You, the the proposed, the draft ordinance, if I understand what you're saying, is you would prohibit all smoking outside anywhere in the city?
No. I thought.
All times of year. Okay, I I then I must have misread it.
Well, I think 95 three C talks about just in the following outdoor places.
Yeah, it's parks, playgrounds, beaches and grounds of city or of building, of city buildings.
It's B that caught my attention.
Bonnie, did you give an email replying to your question about that?
I did not, I'm sorry.
I explained that when the the chapter on outdoor smoking got transferred to a new chapter, uh, the heading of the former section got made into a separate section, and that was simply a clerical error in the.
That helps.
B should should be deleted.
Okay, that's that's very helpful. Thank you. So what you're really talking about here is uh, what we already do, which is no smoking in the parks and the buildings and, okay, well, that's I got no problem with that.
That's exactly right. That's what I I tried to explain early on.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I missed your email. Okay, thanks.
I mean, might we consider having some public feedback on this, like have have some type of public forum where we could get the opinions, because I'm not swayed necessarily the fact that the there might be a more of a charge to people who are affected by landscapers. I just think that they might be have to willing to pay that for it's more of the people who are doing their own laws that I'm concerned about the switch over there and and the cost. And then if we're doing this in mass, the other concern I would have is around how many of these things are then making it into a landfill? Um, because presumably you'd have to replace the equipment. So I I would, I'm actually for, to to Rob's point, getting something because you can talk about improving the environment, but ultimately you have to take action. Um, and this is, again, an inconvenience approach, but it's it's something that's being done in other municipalities. Um, so I what I would suggest is maybe putting it to our citizenry and seeing what's the appetite for it.
I I think that sounds great.
I think it's, you know, that's what I did last month when I tried to get some information from some of the landscapers, but I think getting a broader cross section from the public as well would be very smart. So that except.
But I mean, in general, I'm I'm for some, you know, a attacking these kinds of things, because I think we as a community, if we're talking about doing buffers and doing this, we need to be a leader i- in these things and not kind of reacting. It's okay to be the community that people laugh at because they have a a leaf blower ordinance, but we did, we need to make sure it's the will of the community.
Tim, you were about to say something. Did you have something you want to add? Tim, you were about to say something. Did you have something to add?
Um, I, it's okay, go ahead, move ahead, move on.
Rob, did you have anything else you wanted to add at this point?
No, I think we've, uh, we've hashed out a good deal.
Okay, so
Ted, excuse me, I do want to ask you. So the, what Andrew has proposed is, would that be in the form of a workshop? Is that what we're talking about?
You're doing a workshop? I don't think we want to, I'm not sure we want to do it as
What do we call that? What do we call that kind of, that meeting?
Or I think we could call it We could call it a workshop. We could call it a public hearing, which would receive input regarding, uh, you know, this, this ordinance.
I mean, is it unusual to have multiple items under, isn't there a public hearing scheduled for another issue? We don't have one.
We're gonna set one tonight.
Okay, yeah, so we could, we could presumably have two issues at one public hearing, correct?
We've done that several times, yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So we'll defer action on this until we set another public here, till we set the other public hearings that are involved in here, on this agenda here tonight? And do we need, Glenn, do we need to, do we need a motion to set a public hearing?
No, not at this point, I don't think.
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll move on then, uh, with that. Moving on to G4 is presentation of possible action by the American City Council setting, uh, as a board of appeals on the appeal of the assessment of real estate improvements pursuant to section 26A of the city charter on the following properties. 100 Captain Circle Sussex County Tax Map 335 dash 8.00 dash 4.99 and 108 Captain Circles Sussex County Tax Map 335 8.00 dash 522.00. Uh, we did hear a tax appeal on this and we referred this to Georgiana Tritley, uh, for an extensive review. She has brought back some recommendations to us. Uh, and I hopefully all of you have had a chance to read the report that was submitted, uh, from Georgiana. It was an extensive amount of information. Uh, and, uh, I think she has come up with a recommendation that both of these properties, uh, have a reduction in their current assessment. Uh, and, uh, I would open it up for discussion. These two properties were assessed separately and, uh, both homeowners have asked that they, based upon other review of public record, uh, they have determined that their assessment seemed much seemed out of line with the comparable properties in, in the neighborhood. Georgiana did review it and came up with some recommendations. Uh, we also have, uh, a letter from, uh, Mr. Lux, who's the tax assessor, saying that he felt the adjustments were in align of, for these properties. Comments?
I'll just say, I think the fact that two people have, have felt the same way, um, and they're, they're basically going on a formula. The question I had, and I, I don't know a lot about this, is the A, B and C quality construction in general. Can we get much insight on like what? How does a property go from a B to a C? Is it material that they're using?
Yes, I believe it's, yes. Finished material and other things that, you know, whether or not it's
Size of the home has nothing to do at all with the pro-
Size is one factor, but also, you know, the quality, you know, if it had a shake, a cedar shake roof versus an asphalt roof. If it had granite countertops, if it had, you know, other things.
And Ted, how do they find, how does an assessor find out about the quality of finishes on the inside of a property? Uh, finished
Usually that is filed with the building permit.
Right. Okay, but if that, if the house is, uh, 15, 20 years old, there's a chance that that uh, material would have been replaced, correct, by remodeling?
In this situation, these homes are relatively new.
Yeah.
And if they remodeled, wouldn't that be, show up in the
Uh, building permit.
Remodeling?
Mm-hmm.
It might.
It, it would show up if it's, if it's a renovation that requires a permit.
Right.
If it's replacing cabinets and countertops, that probably would.
Exactly.
Wouldn't show up with replacement of carpet, probably for hardwood floors, but
Yeah.
Other things like that.
Um, it's my understanding that the, the two, uh, the citizens who filed these appeals are, are content with this resolution, right?
That's what I understand too, yeah. So
Well, I, I'll just say, I, I thought Georgiana's explanation was, was persuasive.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I would move that we, um, resolve the appeals on the assessment of real estate and improvements at 100 Capitals, Captain Circle and 108 Captain Circle, consistent with the recommendation from the city assessor and the city, uh, appraiser.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll say
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to new item, new business, uh, item H1 is presentation of possible action on the approval of the African American Heritage Commission bylaws. Rob, you've been chairing this commission. Would you like to talk to us about these bylaws? I know, uh, Trina is, uh, on the call as well.
I'm glad she's still on the call. She, she's very patient.
Yeah, Trina, thank you very much for your patience. Maybe Anne Marie, you could elevate, uh, or bring her into the, onto the platform. Trina, thank you. You can unmute yourself if you would. And click on your video if you wish.
No video.
Okay, that's fine, but welcome. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Okay.
I'd gladly defer to Trina to explain the, the bylaws, but she was the key person in pulling them together. Then I do have a couple of comments on them.
Okay, great. Trina, you want to go ahead?
Uh, well, basically it's, it's just in general, uh, the overall, um, pretty much operations of, of the commission and which followed much of what other, uh, commissions were pretty much doing. So voting and, uh, when the terms are, um, expiring and things of that nature. So, um, it's basically general bylaws that kind of mimic some of the other bylaws that are, are already in force with other commissions.
Well, Mayor, I might point to a couple of items that we might want to ask the commission to, uh, or that we might want to deal with, uh, or ask the, the commission to deal with. In 1C, there is a provision. No, where would it, 1D. All members of the commission shall serve without compensation, but may be reimbursed for actual expenses incurred in connection with their official duties. I think the general principle is good, but we probably want to make that as we do with all commissions, subject to budgetary authority given by the city.
And I think that would be, um, meaning that they would then, that this commission would then submit as other commissions do, an annual budget request to be, for us to consider during the budget process. Uh, so it was, we would need a budget request, uh, by, Anne Marie would need one by the middle of January at the latest, is that correct? Cause you, our budget is due, the draft budget is due on the 31st of January.
We actually would need it by the end of November.
Here, okay.
Yeah, the, the other advantage of making it part of the official budget is that the, the commission itself will, will talk about what expenses it wants to incur. And so you have a preapproval, so it's, it's clear that it's all, you know,
Well, it also means that they'll, they'll plan ahead for the kinds of things they want to
Right.
accomplish in the year and whether they have other conferences they want to attend, et cetera, things like that. Rob, did you have other things?
Well, I just, to get the language so that we can, uh, adopt it, perhaps we could add at the end of it, um, comma, in accordance with a budget previously approved by the city.
Okay.
Does that work, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Great. Is that okay?
Yeah, looks good.
Trina, are you okay with that concept?
Uh, I don't think I should make that final determination.
But you understand the discussion that's going on here.
I do.
Okay.
I do.
I had a question about Article 4A. It talks about an annual organizational meeting that shall be held first regularly scheduled meeting in January of each year. I believe most of our commissions reorganized after an election. So this would be a, this would be off cycle, like the planning commission and things like that. I'm wondering if perhaps we should try to get this commission to reorganize itself in June or immediately following an annual election, rather than January.
I think I, I think I just pulled that out of one of the other, um, in fact, I know I pulled that out of one of the other
Okay.
commissions, uh, so I was trying to follow that template.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't, but I'm not sure if that's appropriate or not, so you all are, can make that determination, I assume.
Right, thank you.
So perhaps, again, to get the wording down for now, Mayor.
I'm sorry I didn't hear you, Rob.
Oh, sorry. So perhaps to get the wording down now, we might replace the words in January with after the city council's organizational meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
So following the city councils.
So it would be, an annual organizational meeting shall be held at a first regularly scheduled meeting after the city council's organizational meeting each year.
Yeah, okay, I think that covers it.
And then my final thought, Mayor, was, and, and Trina, was that, um, like other commissions, the, this commission may wish to have an attendance requirement. So that a member is presumed to have resigned if they don't attend a certain number of meetings in a row or something like that.
I think there was something in there, um, about, um, attendance, but, uh,
It's Article 2, but there's nothing that talks about, uh, missing consecutive meetings.
Right.
What would you recommend, Rob? 3, 4?
I, I might recommend that, um, a, a member shall be deemed to have resigned if they do not attend, i- if they, um, miss three regularly scheduled meetings consecutively.
Okay.
Trina, how does that sound?
That sounds appropriate.
Okay, now here's a, a question, Mayor. Should, should we, uh, approve these as we amend them? Or should we ask the commission to take a look at them in light of our suggestions?
You know, I think that we could go either way. I think in the interest of making sure the commission understands what we're doing, it might be good to ask them to, uh, endorse these, these recommendations.
I agree as well with that.
Great. Then, how do we get our suggestions back in the exact language we've suggested to the commission? Anne Marie, can you take care of that?
Yeah, so I'm taking notes now. Now their next meeting is, is on Thursday and it's not on the agenda. So it probably needs to wait till next month.
Okay.
Um,
And next month's meeting will probably have to happen at a different time. Uh, well, maybe not.
No, I think it's the week before Thanksgiving, so
The week before Thanksgiving, okay, good, all right. Okay, well then we would, if they didn't act on it until their November meeting, we could, uh, we would be able to act on this in December because it will be after our meeting. So
Well, thank you for bringing this to us.
I beg your pardon?
I was just speaking to Trina and thanking her for bringing this to us.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, us, by us, us not approving this tonight, it's not going to hinder their, um,
No.
Their activities, okay.
No. So I don't think we've made any, uh, you know, structural changes other than the things we've talked about. So hopefully the commission will understand this and, uh, and concur with our thinking and will be able to act this soon.
Mayor, I may have been, uh, a little bit, uh, careless. Article 2C already covers the question in a gentler way. Um, we might
Maybe activate it, yeah.
We might ask the commission if they'd like to make that a, uh, an automatic.
Yeah, so perhaps revise that length, the language in C.
Yeah, rather than adding anything in A.
Okay. All right, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Trina, thank you very much. Um, we will defer activity, we will defer approval of this until you, the commission has a chance to review this, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good, Trina.
Uh, then moving on to item H2, which is a lease extension for 303 Cedar Avenue, or Cedar Street, excuse me. Uh, we have a lease extension. Uh, we have a site plan and we had photos courtesy of our photographer, Anne Marie. Uh, you did take these
This was all Janine this time.
This was what?
This was all Janine.
Okay, great, terrific. She's a good photographer. Anyway, uh, Glenn, I believe this is consistent with the other leases that we've been dealing with, correct? We have several trees on this property that are obviously, um, in the right of way. Um, but, but other than that, it looks as though there's no structural things that are in the right of way.
And, uh, Anne Marie, is that your understanding that there are no obstructions other than
That's correct.
That have been there a while?
So what is your pleasure? I have a motion to consider this For a motion?
I'd move that we approve the lease extension.
Thank you very much, Rob. We have a second.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item H3 is presentation of possible action on a recommendation from the Bicycle Pedestrians Advisory Committee to replace the double bollards at road crossings on Georgetown to Lewis Trail, uh, with single bollards. This was brought to us by, um, the committee. They took a look at these. You'll recall that, and there are photographs attached showing these. There are several, uh, places along the trail where we have double bollards installed. Uh, this, these bollards were installed as, when the trail was first put in. And we were having an issue with, uh, joyriding of vehicles and other all terrain vehicles on the trail, and this was a way to reduce that. Uh, and they have served that purpose. I think what we're hearing now is they're concerned about how they impact bicycle, uh, traffic on the trail. I know there's been some discussion back and forth amongst council members regarding this, and I would open it up for discussion. We have, we have, I didn't mention it tonight in my opening comments, but, uh, trail safety remains a big issue for us. Our trails are, especially in this pandemic, have been, become very, very heavily used. Uh, we do have significant issues with people failing to, bicyclists particularly, failing to adhere to the state laws regarding bicycle crossing roads. Uh, and we've, Deldot has come back and placed, uh, not only stop signs, but another additional sign that says, "Look Again", above the stop sign to try and encourage people to be more of, uh, in, more respectful of, of, of what's going on and what kind of traffic. Uh, I would say fortunately, we have not had any serious, uh, serious, you know, accidents, but they certainly could happen at any time. So I'd open it up for discussion.
Could I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what the problem is that the bicyclists are bringing up. Could, could we, I think Don
Don Long looks like he
I'm in here for both
If Don is on, uh, is, if Don, if the Don is on our attendee list, is Don Long, um, Anne Marie, perhaps we could
Could we get a little more background? I appreciate the memo, but it's, there's only really one sentence. It just says, "The concern is that the double ball, bollards pose a hazardous, hazard to cyclists because they provide little space for cyclists to pass." Can we just get a little more explanation of what the problem is?
Don, you're currently muted. Don, you're currently muted, if you would unmute yourself or unmute, also bring up yourself over in video if you could.
Unless that's a different Don.
Maybe a different Don, I don't know.
Was, was Rob, or I guess, I guess this is him and Andrew's committee, maybe they can tell us what happened if, if they were there with the, if that's, if we have the wrong Don on, not the wrong Don, just different Don.
A different one, right.
As far as I understand, if you look at the photos, the, the, the idea is that it's difficult to pass through the double bollard because you're, you're supposed to stay in their right lane, but as you approach those double bollards to pass them, you're either forced to go towards the middle of the lane or there's a very narrow piece on the right-hand side that you're to pass. I think they're saying pass, I'm assuming that's what they mean is passing the actual bollard and not passing other cyclists or passing pedestrians, I think that's they intend by saying pass.
Is that because they, you have to go, go down a single file or if you were driving to a breast, you have to narrow it down, I mean?
That's my assumption of what, yeah, of the issue is that you have to, you're, you're in the right lane, in the past these, you have to essentially either go towards the middle and go single files you suggest, or there's a very much narrower spot to the outside edge of the bollard that then can force you to go off the trail essentially.
And also require that you go single file if you go on, on a narrower side, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So I, I just pulled up the chat from the BikePed meeting and there was one participant in the chat that said, "I had a bollard-related accident on one thing."
Okay.
So I, I don't know the circumstances, that's all I know, but that was.
Say what caused it.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I, I have to tell you, my general view, looking at the pictures and walking around and taking a look is, I mean, one of the problems we have is that people either are unaware that they're on, on, when, when these, when you're going across particularly a major road, and I'm thinking of course of Kings or Savannah in particular, that the bollards do alert people that there's, there's a hazard ahead. And they also, by constricting the lane, they, they do force people to slow down. So that's, that's the safety part of it, and I think forcing people to slow down is, is vital. And then there's, of course, the other, if we were to go forward with this, we have no idea what it would cost, and I'm not sure who even has jurisdiction to, to do this if, if it's something we want to do. I don't know if it's us or state.
I had the same issue as well, Bonnie, on there. There's not a financial impact is left blank on this, so we don't know the cost or can, is Lewis expected to do this or Del Dot or?
So, so that's all stuff that if, if council's interested in pursuing, that I would follow up with Del Dot to figure out. But you may have noticed that the chief turned on his, his camera, so that leads me to believe he may have some information to share.
Hey Chief, it's yours.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Bonnie kind of captured it, though, you know, yes, inconvenient, the double bollards. I would think that they act as, as a calming influence, you know, because people are kind of forced to slow down at those major intersections. Inconvenient, I get it, but I think slower bicyclists is better, especially at the major crossing. And notwithstanding the one Anne Marie just mentioned, we don't have any bollard-related accident as far as the police are concerned. That's it.
I would, to Chief's point about safety, I think it's probably worth noting, Kim, Kim and I took a field trip, and there are other issues, like I think there's some lack of striping, I think that somewhere, some of the signs that warn you where you're coming to the intersections are a little too late. So I think in some, in particular, some of the sharp turns could use some striping to delineate, to stay on site, you know, one side of the path or the other, so I, I think in general, there's, this, our part of the trail, this probably needs some improvement from a signage, striping standpoint.
Sounds like I need to go on a ride with you guys.
Right, you're welcome to do it. I will add to what Andrew just said. I, I went on three different bike trips during the last seven days using the trails here in the city. It was the first time I've been on a bike on the trails. I've walked on the trails, but it was the first time for me to actually pedal on the, on the, on the trails. And my concern right now is that if we were to act on approving this suggestion, this recommendation, that with, that there are going to be other repercussions, I think the bollards offer some kind of a safety, traffic calming feature that we, I would be hesitant to suggest, to recommend that we remove them without having an additional design in mind to address the remaining safety issues with these, that, you know, at the intersections. Does that make sense to you all?
Yeah.
It's, it's more than just removing bollards, in other words, or reducing the number.
Oh, since the trails have been in existence, we've added several features, the little flexible markers along Savannah Road, just as you cross and you head out.
Yep.
And road, those were not there originally because there's a grade differential there. But if you look at the photograph, on the, the bottom photograph on page six of the eight that we were provided, that is Junction Breakwater Trail, and we had a double, actually Del Dot added double bollards there to slow traffic down, slow bike traffic down, coming down the hill. So they, they took a suggestion that we had made to them regarding the, the ones that are within the city limits and incorporated it into this particular access after we did have an incident where somebody came down that hill from Freeman Highway or from the, from the trail and pulled out into a lane on Gil's Neck and ended up with a broken leg. So it was a, it was a freak accident, but the guy, the, the person who did that made a very, I would say wide turn onto, onto Gil's Neck, and so these bollards were added at that point to, to have an impact to slow traffic down.
Yeah, that is especially, it still remains to be a very dangerous point on the trail, very dangerous.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
What is your pleasure, Council?
I, I, my preference would be to defer this to Tim's point, that we could look at what, if, if we are going to make changes to the bollards, what other additional things need to be done to make that a safer experience?
So we could, we could deny this request and ask for additional input regarding other things that would improve the safety? Is that what you want to do?
That, that would be something I would suggest.
Okay, you want to make that in the form of a motion?
I move that we delay this action to understand better our authority to do this, who's going to pay for it, and what additional steps can be done to make these intersections safer.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second to that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So Andrew, if we could get you to carry that message back to the BikePed Committee, that would be great, okay? Thank you. Moving then on to item H4 is presentation of possible action or recommendation to award a contract for dredging at the Canalfront Park Marina to Ray Norris. Mr. Norris was a sole bidder on the, the RFP that we put out to dredge the Canalfront Park Marina. He has previously dredged the marina on several occasions, he knows the project well. As was noted in the description here, it's been three years since we dredged and we have been setting aside money to dredge on an annual basis. At this point, the slips are pretty well silted in, and we did have some issues this spring with people not being able to get enough of a draft to be able to put whatever boat they had, they had gotten, they had planned to put into the marina, into the slip safely, even at high tide, because we basically lost, we, some people had sailboats just couldn't get in if they didn't have a retractable keel. So this is something we've been doing over the last several years. This is an activity that still is in the permitting process. It's an activity that would be done in January as it is hydraulically done, and the bridge spoil is pumped across the canal into the Army Corps dredge spoil sites. And that is, that is a spoil site that we're very fortunate to have. I can tell you that Nellup and Acres does not have a spoil site such as they do, such as we do, and they are having to wet truck all of their spoil, they're doing the same kind of thing this fall or this winter, and they're going to have to truck their spoil. And that is a very messy and very expensive and labor-intensive process to do, so we're very fortunate to have this as an alternative.
Ted, I have a question about that, the dredging activity and the placement of the spoils in that designated area. Is that, is that, is there a permitting process for that?
Yes, there is.
Okay, and who applies for that permit? I did not see that detail included.
The city does, the city does, and the application is in, and it is in, it's, it's in the process of review. We've never been denied use of it, but it is, there are three actual spoil sites over there, and the de-watering process is, is, you know, something that has to transpire after the spoil is in there.
What is that called, that process?
De-watering, the spoil that comes in is a slurry, and it sits in the, in the spoil site and over a period of time, the, the water dissipates, and so you're left with the spoil that's, that's, that was actually what was pumped.
And then, and that's, that is just left there in that space, in that area, right?
It is, in, in recent years, it has been left there in, early on, there was a requirement to remove it. Some of it was taken to a, a barrow pit out in the county, some of it was actually utilized as a substrate at Cape Shores for some beach replenishment that they were doing at one time. But in recent years, there has not been any requirement to remove the spoil. They have been asking that the dikes or the berms around the spoil sites actually be built up, and that is some prep work that would be part of this as well.
And who, is that something the Army Corps has asked for?
Oh, that would be Army Corps, they would make that requirement if they chose to.
I see, and do we know what the cost of that will be for building up the?
There's no, there's no requirement at this point, so it hasn't been, you know, no.
I see. Hmm.
Okay.
You know, help educate me on this, you mentioned earlier that some of the sailboats weren't able to use the slips in the spring, where they did, was the city in a position to be able, I assume these are all slips that are at the city dock, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so did we have, did the city have other slips that they could make available to those boaters, or did we lose?
We did have at least one person that we moved to a different slip.
And I think we had one other person that went off to a privately onslaught.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question around the allocation, so getting other property owners around the city to kick into this, how is that parsed out in terms of who pays, who pays what?
You know, other, other properties are, you know, who need to dredge have gone to Evelyn to get a permit as well, and they will then help with the mobilization, that's, everybody does their own, that pays their own cubic yard dredging, but the mobilization fee is prorated over the linear footage of frontage that the properties own, the properties have. So if somebody has 100 feet of frontage and we have 400 feet of frontage, they would pay the one-fifth of the cost of the mobilization.
And if it's, if the cost is based on the dredging per cubic foot, why is the frontage the determiner of the split of the mobilization fee?
It's always, that, see, it was the only equitable way to do it in terms of, everybody has a different amount of spoil and they're paying separately for the amount of spoil that they, that they, that Mr. Norris would, would pump out of their particular slip, so they are paying an equivalent amount of, for the spoil of, if they had 400 cubic yards or they had 4,000 cubic yards, they're paying that, that amount of money for each of those, the cubic yardage. So the cost is really just getting him set up, and he's, because he, it can reach several marinas or several boat slip areas with, from this mobilization site, he's able to prorate that over those slips.
So Ted, does this guy, I assume he works off of a flat, well, I'm not, I don't know what he's working off of, but does he just keep his equipment in a stationary area and then?
No, no, no.
Pardon?
No, it's a, it's, it's like a barge, a small barge.
That's what I figured, probably a barge.
And it has, and it has a, an auger type head on it.
Okay.
And that goes into a suction system that he, he drops.
Right.
Pipe across the canal and, and then puts it into the spoil site.
Okay.
So he has to bring all, all of that equipment is brought in on flat beds.
Right. And when, in the past, when the city has done this, how many adjacent property owners have participated? What's the history or the record been about how many?
It varies from year to year based upon soundings that are done from time to time. This year there will be, I believe, five total.
I thought it was only three. I, I thought it was only three with this mobilization.
You got Sheridan Walsh and you've got.
I thought that was a separate mobilization.
No, he's going to be part of this one. He wasn't before.
Okay.
So it's four, right, plus the city.
So a total of five parties.
Correct.
And is it possible that once this gentleman shows up to start doing the job, that one of the, someone else might approach and say, "Hey, I want to be in on this deal too"?
It takes a good, for a private individual, it takes a good six months to a year to get a permit, there's no way to add on.
Oh, so the permit is specific to particular frontage?
Absolutely.
Okay. Oh, I didn't realize that.
Each, each individual has to apply separately for a permit with the Army Corps and then where.
I see. And, and your experience is, is that this is more, it's a maintenance expense that we have here, right? Every two years, this is, needs to be done.
Well, this is, this is a three-year cycle right now, we haven't done it.
Right, and we budget $30,000 a year that goes, that gets put into a, in, an account just for this, so that way it spreads it out.
Yeah, I, I understand, thank you, Anne Marie, but, right. But doesn't, this, this document says that it's supposed to be done, recommended every two years, right? Isn't, doesn't it, I didn't read that.
It, you saw it, it has been done every two years, but this past year, we did not do it in 19, so we're, you know, we actually will be done in January of '21.
Right.
And this is all subject to the spawning cycle of the flounder, and so it has to be done in the winter, there's a very narrow timeframe to do it in, usually it's from early December until the end of February.
I see. And, and now he'll have enough time between January, you said he'll start, start in January until the end of February to do these five, five. until the end of February to do these five areas?
Actually, he'll do more than those five. He's actually the man who's going to do the dredging for Hennel Open Acres as well. I understand he has that contract, so he will do all of that. The dredging process itself moves along rather quickly, but it's the labor, it's the labor associated with getting everything set up. Once he's set up, he can move.
Right. I may ask one more question, Ted. And when this dredging is done, how, you know, I understand where the edge of the canal is, going towards the channel in the canal, how far towards that channel is he dredging?
That's really laid out by Evelyn on when she submits the permit, when she submits the application. She does soundings out so far. I couldn't tell you the exact dimension, but they go out to a point in the channel, not in the channel, but at the edge of the channel where there's...
But towards the channel, yeah.
And this will be dredged to six feet below water.
I just have one more kind of thing to add, just outside of this a bit. But so in looking at the numbers, it doesn't necessarily look like it's making, it's hard to tell. It's making money, breaking even. At the very least, we're probably there, breaking even, maybe losing. So I was thinking that may be good to consider outsourcing this marina, potentially in the future, is looking to privatize it and allow people to make bids on it, and maybe treating this marina as a lease operation from the city and let other, let someone make a business of it, and then let them bid on the dredging going forward.
It could be considered. I would be surprised if somebody would apply for it. But we could certainly consider. We do, you know, it is, when the Canalfront Park was built, it was recognized that, and it was the then position of City Council that the marina was an important part of the creation of the park and maintaining our relationship with the sea. And in fact, there was a provision in, which was then modified, that there would be commercial fishermen that would be allowed to dock there. That never happened. The one person who had a commercial fishing business at the time, because of the way the park was developed, they would have to offload over on the other side, and they could only dock their boat at Canalfront Park. And that never happened.
Okay.
I mean, this, unfortunately, when, as we all know, I think everyone knows, the canal was originally part of the intercoastal waterway. It ceased to be part of the intercoastal waterway about 1999. And there's been no dredging done in the canal since January of 2001 by the Army Corps. The Army Corps maintains Roosevelt Inlet and the first 1,200 feet of Lewis Beach, and that's all they maintain here. So there's been no dredging of the canal, and there's been continued sloughing of the banks. So, you know, there is a fair amount of turbidity there. Where there's greater current, i.e. at the drawbridge, there is greater depth. In fact, if you go to the swing bridge, because of the choke point that is created there, there's actually a spot on this side of the drawbridge that is well over 40 feet deep.
Really?
Because of the churn.
Yeah.
Don't tell anyone about that. That's a good, it's a honey hole there.
Yes, exactly. You know about it. But many years ago, actually not so many years ago, Bonnie will probably remember, we actually had two dolphins that came in one summer, and they spent the whole summer in that little honey hole that you described. And there was a whole effort made by people to try and figure out, how are the dolphins going to get out of here? And it was like, should we call themers? Who's going to get them? And then one day, they just took off. It was time for them to leave. It was about this time of year. So I guess they got their fill of whatever fish were in that spot, and off they went. So what's happened, you know, is the canal is very broad, this side of the drawbridge. And where our marina is, the city's marina is, it tends, the water tends to be more, it doesn't have the amount of activity that it does on, say, over where the headboats are at Fisherman's Wharf. So we have more silting than they do on that side.
And that's a function of a number of boats moving through this area, the city?
It's boats and just the movement of the current.
Yeah. It seems...
If you look at the overfalls, their slip silts in, you know.
Yeah, it does.
And they have to dredge it as well.
Okay.
Okay. So...
I feel like I've learned a lot.
I would encourage you to come down and take a look at it when they get around. It's usually cold, obviously, in January. But I would encourage you to come down, and you'll learn a lot about how the dredging is done. I wouldn't advise you, unless you have some muck boots, I wouldn't advise you to go over to the swell and look around.
I remember seeing them set up in previous years, but I, you know, I didn't know who was doing what at the time. I wasn't on council at the time. I didn't need to know.
Yeah, okay. So what is your pleasure, Rob, to reference this contract? Our motion to approve this contract?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it. I don't know why, yeah, we've got to do it. It's maintenance. We have an asset out there along the canal, and if we're in the business of running out boat slips, we need to make sure it's maintained correctly.
Is there a second? Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to item H5, its presentation of possible action on a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 197 zoning, Section 197-73 floodplain related to fill in the floodplain. Ann Marie floated some dates earlier this afternoon. Did anyone take a look at those?
The only thing I have so far is that the 29th of October doesn't work.
Okay.
So, and really, for the floodplain fill, we're looking at the November dates.
So we're looking at the 10th, 12th, or 17th? You all have your calendars out, or maybe you did this already? Anybody have a preference?
What are the proposed dates, please?
The 10th, 12th, or 17th of November.
What time of day?
I was thinking a 6 o'clock start, because that gives the public an opportunity to attend.
I'm good for any of those then.
We want to try and do it, I think the closer we get to Thanksgiving, the harder it may be to get people. So maybe we should try to do it either the 10th or the 12th.
10th is fine, but...
For the 10th, are we doing this also for the environmental protection ordinance?
We could.
Yeah.
You can do that? You want to try and do it on the 10th of November? Does that suit you, Rob?
Yes.
So the 10th of November at 6 o'clock, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And it's for two hearings?
Yeah, so the first one will be on the floodplain ordinance, and the other one would be on the environmental. We might want to reverse the order of that. Okay, do the environmental thing first.
Okay, I'd move that we set a public hearing on the ordinance to on floodplain with respect to fill in the floodplain, and also on the proposed environmental protection chapter of the Lewis municipal code covering gas-powered landscaping equipment and the current littering and outdoor smoking chapters for November 10th at 6:00 p.m.
Great. Thank you, Bonnie. Second, Rob, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then the other thing I sent out a request for dates about was the charter changes on election.
Correct.
And registration.
That we should do as a separate hearing. So you want to try and do that on the 12th? Or we can do it on October the 26th, I think.
Even better.
I don't think it matters at this point. The 26th is a Monday night. What's your preference, Council?
Sooner than later.
I beg your pardon?
Sooner, oh, I'm sorry, sooner rather than later. I agree with Rob.
Okay, so you want to do it on the 26th, Monday, the 26th, at 6 o'clock?
That's fine, Bonnie.
I think I...
It's two weeks from tonight, Rob, for Tim.
You're right. I just have on my calendar, for some reason, I have a Del Dot meeting that night, I thought.
Oh, is that five points?
I think I have it, Del Dot Zoom at 6 o'clock.
That might be the, you know what, that's probably the five points. I haven't put it on my calendar yet.
Okay, so since you can go to that, we can't do that.
So back November 12th?
Yeah, it looks like we're back to November 12th.
Now, there's three items on the 12th. That's it.
No, the other one's the 10th.
Okay.
So we're doing floodplain at the end, the environmental thing on the 10th, and we'll do the charter changes on the 12th.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
And that is a hearing on the 12th, right?
All right. Is there anything else that anyone has to bring forward tonight? Hearing none. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thanks, Rob. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Been another long evening, but I think we accomplished some things here this evening. So thank you all, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but thank you.
Do.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. Good job.
Thank you. Bye-bye.